Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the January 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Gregory, can we, you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Harker.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Meese.
Here.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Mr. Shelton.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
If you all will stand with me and observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chairman.
I would like to nominate your current past chairman as our future chairman, Mr. Nathan Hawke.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? There are no other nominations, I will close the nominations and ask for a vote.
Mr. Brown.
I'll vote yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. I will now turn the meeting over to our new chairman, Mr. Harker.
Thank you, Mrs. Ragsdale. Floor is open for nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate our past and hopefully future co-chair, Ms. Colette Henderson.
A motion by Mr. Webb.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any other nominations?
Mr. Brown.
Motion carries. Seven in favor, zero against. Thank you, Colette. Congratulations. Hearing of the citizens. Is anyone here tonight to address this board concerning a matter that's not on our agenda? All right. Approval of the agenda.
I'm sorry, we do have two people signed up for hearing the citizens.
Okay.
The first is Katie Whitehead.
My name is Katie Whitehead. I live in the Chatham-Blairs district. I spoke to you on November 7th with concerns about the draft zoning ordinance. Power stations are a by right use in M2 industrial zones. The county has no regulations to govern them. Before the November 19th Board of Supervisors meeting, I reviewed the draft zoning ordinance with the help of experts who have witnessed harms from data centers and power plants in Virginia and throughout the Southeast. Experts who are working to prevent harm. Environmental attorneys sometimes get a bad rap. In this case, they spotted an oversight in the draft definition of power station, which did not include power generation for onsite use. County staff corrected this loophole and the supervisors accepted the revision. The draft zoning ordinance, the board will vote on at their January 24th first meeting, defines power stations as generating electricity for onsite or offsite use. Unfortunately, we still face the challenge of not being able to use the proposed new ordinance to regulate projects already under review by the county. I just wanted to follow up on my November comments to you.
All right. Thank you so much. Mrs. Ragsdale, you have another?
We do. David Perry.
Good evening, members of the commission and county staff. My name is David Perry. I'm executive director of the Southern Virginia Land Conservancy. We own property in Pennsylvania County, have a work from home employee in the county, and maintain a PO box in the city of Danville. We also hold non-conservation easements in Pennsylvania County, totaling more than 2,100 acres of land. I'm here tonight to briefly speak to the Planning Commission about who we are and what services we provide to the residents of Pennsylvania County, although this is not my first time coming before this body. The Southern Virginia Land Conservancy works to support Pennsylvania County's comprehensive plan. We do this by working with rural landowners in the county who wish to protect their land from excessive development. Through a permanent legal tool called a conservation easement, the Land Conservancy assists local landowners, many of whom are working farmers vital to the county's economy. Conservation easements limit how many times the land can be subdivided and how many dwellings can be built. They require landowners to use agricultural and forestry best management practices to protect water quality. They don't in any way limit a landowner's ability to use the property for agriculture, forestry, agrotourism, agribusiness, or other rural land uses. The property remains in the ownership of the local landowners and stays on the county's tax rolls. It's the job of the Land Conservancy to enforce these conservation easements in perpetuity. We visit each property we've conserved in Pennsylvania County at least annually to ensure that the agreement is being upheld. As I said, we support Pennsylvania's county's comprehensive plan, and we believe in the value of good planning to ensure sustainable growth for our communities while preserving what is special and unique about the county. Further, state law requires that each conservation easement be compatible with a locality's comprehensive plan. It's in this capacity I've been before this body in the past, seeking approval from the Planning Commission, that a new conservation project is in fact compatible with the comprehensive plan. I'd like to offer the assistance of the Southern Virginia Land Conservancy in helping Pennsylvania County update its comprehensive plan when it is due for review. In partnership with our sister organizations in Roanoke and Lynchburg, we've been working with localities and planning commissions for nearly 30 years to promote and support strategic planning that protects each county's vital natural resources, farmland, forests, waterways, and wildlife habitat. Our goal is that our children and their children enjoy the same natural bounty that we do today, full of places to farm, grow timber, and hunt, fish, and recreate. And lastly, I hope to address the commission later this evening in regard to data centers. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
That's all that signed up to speak.
All right. Approval of the agenda. Floor is open for a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before they approve the agenda, I'd like to move to amend the agenda, to move the rezoning case of R-25-001 Ballico Public Hearing to the last slot of the item, under Agenda Item Number 11, and to add an item therewith to withdraw parcel number 2426-69-3980 from said application.
Motion by Mr. Brown. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Webb. All right. Motion carries. Is there any other discussion or motions regarding the agenda? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Motion by Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Meese. All those in favor, please vote in affirmative. Motion to approve the amended agenda carries. Seven in favor, zero against. Floor is open for a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Henderson. Please cast your vote. Motion to approve the minutes carries. Seven in favor, zero against. Chairman's report. I just wanted to thank you all for your vote of confidence. It's humbling to serve on this committee and also to serve as the chairman. I know we've had a busy month, and I appreciate each and every one of you doing your homework and asking questions and attending meetings, and you go above and beyond, and I'm humbled to serve with you. And Ms. Henderson, thank you for backing me up last month. You do a great, great job, so thank you. That's all I have. We'll get right into our cases for the month. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning and Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we're charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must also ensure that our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:13, case R-25-002 is now open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-25-002, Nancy Weatherford has petitioned to rezone 8.394 acres located on State Road 869, Stony Mill Road, in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent property zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Rich Armstrong is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Armstrong.
If he's not here, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale? Hearing none. The floor is open for motion.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-002, I make a recommendation that we change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb.
Mr. Webb. Yours didn't come up.
Mine?
Mr. Webb.
I just did it.
Okay. Your dissent should.
Motion carries. Six yes, zero no. At 7:16, case R-25-003 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case R-25-003, Janet Brooks has petitioned to rezone 30.36 acres located on State Road 801 Drybridge Road in the Callens-Grettna Election District from M1 Industrial District, Light Industry, to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Janet Brooks is here to represent the petition.
Before you come all this way, do you have anything that you need to add? Okay. All right. Anyone else here to speak to this case? All right.
No one signed up.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Ragsdale?
No.
All right. At 7:17, public hearing is closed. Let's see. It's you, Ms. Meese.
I'm sorry to say I didn't bring my glasses. Of course, I can't repeat that number again. Could you tell me what it was? I'm sorry.
It's S25003.
S25003.
I mean, R25, I'm sorry.
What is it?
R25003.
I make a motion, I have not had any opposition on this case, and I make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors that this request be honored. Thank you.
Yeah. Motion by Mrs. Meese. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Motion carries. Seven yes, zero no. At 7:18, case R-25-004 is now open for public hearing.
Case R-25-004, Eric and Ashley Brown have petitioned to rezone 13.15 acres located on State Road 839 W. L. Powell Road in the Chatham-Blairs Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Eric and Ashley Brown are here to represent the petition.
Mr. and Ms. Brown? Yes. Do you all have anything you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
And at 7:19, public hearing is closed. Mr. Shelton?
Bear with me, I'm getting thrown in the fire here. Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-004, I make a positive motion to recommend and accept as submitted to this board.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Motion carries. Seven in favor, zero against. At 7:20, case S-25-002 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-25-002, Jonathan and Shayna Mize have petitioned for a special use permit on 1.66 acres located on State Road 882 West Sunrise Drive in the Tunstall Election District to allow for the placement of a double-wide manufactured home in accordance with Pennsylvania County Code, Section 35-223. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jonathan and Shayna Mize are here to represent the petition.
Mr. and Ms. Mize, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else here speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. At 7:21, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case S-25-002, I make a motion that we issue a special use permit to allow double-wide to be put on this property.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Meese. Any discussion on the motion?
I just said this is the same number as the first case I had.
Okay. All right. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Seven in favor, zero against. At 7:22, case S-25-003 is now open for public hearing. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S-25-003, Shaco Solar LLC has petitioned for an amendment to the conditions that were placed on a special use permit issued in 2020 on 15 parcels of land totaling 907.88 acres located on Halifax Road and Java Road in the Banister Election District. This was issued for a utility-scale solar energy facility. The applicant is requesting to amend the condition placing a timeframe on when construction must start. The original condition stated that construction had to commence within three years of the issuance date. There was legislation passed by the General Assembly that gave automatic extension to all special use permits that were issued after July 1 of 2020 until July 1 of 2025. The applicant is requesting to have the condition amended to allow them time after July 1 of 2025 to start construction. A representative from Shaco Solar LLC is here to represent the petition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Yuen Sung. I'm a project developer for Total Energies. Thank you for the opportunity to be presenting here tonight. Also with me tonight here are Dalton Carr, who directs development in this region, and Kadrik Winmore, our counsel. We are, we build, develop, own, operate energy projects across the country, and we're here to discuss an amendment to an existing special use permit at Zenith Solar Project, formerly known as Shaco Solar. To simply put it, we're just asking for a bit more time on the permit to allow for the delay caused by an electric grid operator, and at the same time, we'll be working to update the project to be within, to be in line with the current zoning ordinance as outlined in the staff report from the community development. We do have a presentation.
We're working on getting that up for you. Hold on just a second.
Sure. Sure. Perfect. Alright, I'll quickly walk through the presentation here to provide more background and color on this request. As Emily stated, this project will span 15 parcels of land totaling 907.8 acres. It is located on Highway 57, Halifax Road, and State Road 640, Java Road. It is in the Banister Election District. Here's a little bit more history on the special use permit and the zoning history. Parcels are zoned A1 Agricultural. On September 8, 2020, an SUP was approved for Shaco Solar Project, subject to 17 conditions. The SUP approval back then had certain setbacks in screening and buffering requirements in accordance with the zoning ordinance at the time of the approval. The zoning ordinance has been amended a few times since the SUP approval in 2020, and the amendments included significantly increased setbacks beyond what was approved in SUP. The SUP expires July 1, 2025, based on Virginia code. Over the past couple of years, we engaged with county staff regarding the timeline and amendment of this SUP. And on November 24th, 21st, 2024, we submitted an application to amend conditions of the SUP in accordance with the current zoning ordinance. Our request included modifying site plan to meet new setbacks in screening standards, and seeking an extension to align with the grid interconnection timeline. Here's a little more background, I guess a little more details on the extension request, and I think a better way to display or explain this is through this timeline chart. You know, here, this is the project development timeline, highlighting how the SUP is closely tied to the interconnection timeline. In 2019, Shaco Solar followed the standard process of the grid interconnection, and entered the project into the queue and completed Phase 1 study, Phase 2 study, and kicked off Phase 3 study, right before PGM began a queue reform that put, that held the queue in limbo for three years and pausing all studies for a lot of projects, including Shaco Solar projects. And as you can see on the SUP timeline below, the approval for SUP was obtained in 2020 in anticipation of construction commencement in 2022 and COD in 2024. And the queue reform has significantly delayed construction commencement and commercial operation beyond the initial timeframe of the SUP. In, three years later, PGM finally established a new process, and Shaco Solar entered the new process at that time, and since then, it has completed Phase 1, Phase 2 studies, and will begin Phase 3 studies at the end of this month, and with huge financial securities at risk. With this extension, we will be able to complete interconnection studies and finally build this project, so the request is really to align our SUP approval with the interconnection timeline. Despite the delay caused by the interconnection queue reform, Total Energies has committed to advance the project throughout this period, inclusive of site control extensions necessary to meet interconnection timeline, refresh of environmental studies and agency consultation, advanced engineering design and study, and coordination with PGM and Dominion Energy on grid interconnection. The project is expected to post $1.2 million in financial security by January 21, 2025, necessary to proceed to Phase 3 study. With this additional deposit, Shaco Solar will have placed a grand total of $2.4 million in financial security at risk in order to advance the project on the fastest possible timeline. Also, procurement of equipment and network upgrades will begin to take place following the receipt of an interconnection service agreement later this year, and we anticipate two to three years of PGM system upgrades and construction at project costs prior to commercial operation in Q4 2028. The staff has reviewed our request and recommended approval of the request with the above changes to the conditions originally placed on the SUP. The recommended conditions include first setbacks, we will maintain 150-foot setbacks from all adjacent property lines, 200-foot setbacks from any bordering residential properties. On landscaping, we will maintain 100-foot landscaped area and provide a landscaping maintenance plan to, for approval prior to construction and site plan approval. The start of construction will be within two years of the date of the modification of SUP conditions placed on the original approval order, and for wheel shaft protection, we'll be providing a wheel shaft protection plan to the Director of Community Development for approval prior to issuance of any permits. We have been in touch with staff members regarding the changes to conditions over the past few weeks. And in addition to the conditions recommended for approval, we've also have a few additional modifications. We've shared those with the staff for consideration, and they are highlighted on this slide. And the main purpose of the modification to Condition 1 and 3 here highlighted is to make sure the projects will be, you know, meeting the requirements specifically designed for setbacks, landscaping, and screening, not anything else that are not applicable to the project. In terms of Condition 14 here, we'd like to ask for a little bit more time on the extension because the exact PGM, you know, network upgrades and equipment procurement timeline is still unknown. We've had our, you know, best estimates on when construction can start, and we'll have a better idea about that timeline when we receive the interconnection service agreement later this year. So having a couple, you know, additional couple of years on the SUP will ensure that, you know, we don't have to come back again down the road for another extension of six months or, you know, or 12 months. So that summarizes the background of this case, and we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, we're happy to address.
Anyone have any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some, we do have some people signed up to speak.
Okay.
Kathy Ramsey.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Ramsey, I'm from the Banister District. I received a letter in the mail that stated about the rezoning, and it may be that property that I'm adjacent to, across the street from my property, will be where the construction with vehicles, I guess, will have to travel to get to the site. Well, the first thing I'd like to say that I'm opposed to it, and members of our community are also opposed to even having the solar panels there. So my speaking on this is, with 200 feet, how many is that, how many yards is that? It sounds like a whole lot until you put it out there and you see how far that is from your home. I've lived in Pennsylvania County for all of my life. I went off to school and I came back because I love the beauty of the county, and also I love the neighborhood that I lived in. My mom's home was there, and my sister owns that now, and she rents it out. I have a double-wide that's behind that that's adjacent to where this site is that's going to be placing the solar panels. Now, my objection to it, they're planning to run the interest or how you get your vehicles to the site may not be on my property, but if it's adjacent to my property, that causes problems for renting the property afterwards, or either selling the property. The homeowners there in Pennsylvania County in the Banister District on 57 and 640, they are proud homeowners, and if they decide to sell, it's going to be a problem, even with the solar panels there. I have a statement from my sister, she lives in Virginia Beach, she owns the property that's in front of mine, and I know that you went through an intense process in trying to get the solar panels in Pennsylvania County, but she wanted me to make some statements, and I'm going to do that. She said, "The dark surface of the solar panels absorb most of the light and heat that reaches them, however, only 15% of the incoming energy is converted into electricity. The other 85% is returned to the environment as heat. Because the panels are so much darker than the surrounding vegetation, large swaths of solar fields will absorb and emit heat at a high rate, which can be unknown consequences in surrounding environment, what are health consequences to humans." Now, we all say we want to make it better for our environment, better for people to live, we want people to come to Pennsylvania County, and we want the county to grow. Banister District has a lot of land, but we don't want it to become another place where all you see is solar panels or either database centers. We love where we live, and we want to keep it healthy and safe. She also did some research, she says Jeffrey Lovick, a research ecologist with the United States Geological Survey, indicates some solar panels can incurate insects and burn the feathers of birds that fly through. What will that do to protect the wildlife, to those microbiomes that play a key role in human health and wellness? We all depend on protection in our immune system and our pathogens. The industry standard lifespan of most panels are 25 to 30 years. The manufacturing process of the solar panels harbor toxic chemicals. Those chemicals do not go away once installed. What is the plan to contain toxic leaks that damage panels and will happen to the panels when they have reached their use capacity?
Ms. Ramsey, if you could wrap up in about 10 seconds.
Okay.
Yep.
Once the panels have reached their usefulness, what is the plan of cleanup? Or is there cleanup? Or they just sit there? We may not be here in the next 10 years, 100 years, but we have family that will be, and we want to protect them as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michelle Wilson. Michelle Wilson.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wilson, and I have been in the dark for four and a half years about this whole project. We own a farm adjacent to this, probably, we have been contacted by solar panel companies for years about this. This is also a multi-generational family farm that we have had. My grandfather had it, and it passed down to my dad, passed it down to us, I hope to pass it down to my children. What breaks my heart, I know nothing, I felt like I learned by a fire hose from what she was speaking about before. So this is four and a half years into this, and they're continuing to ask for an extension on something I need to know about, but I don't understand many things about it, other than what Kathy has probably already talked about. What breaks my heart is that I went through GIS, I counted probably 50 to 80 homes that are going to be bordering up to this solar panel farm. They will walk out into their backyard. 200 feet is not that much, and you have multi-generational families that have been there for years. I went down to Shaco on Sunday, I talked to people. They, they were like, "Oh my gosh, I know who you are. I used to work with your parents, I used to work with your grandparents. You have people that have been in this area for years." And what are they going to get out of it? I went and spoke with one fellow, went into his home, invited me in, and he said, "Michelle, what do I get out of this?" And I said, "You get nothing out of this. You have four or five families that have become millionaires, and you get nothing. You lose your property value, you're going to walk out..." He said, "It looks like outer space, it looks like something from outer space." And I said, "Yes, it does, and this is what you will be seeing in your front yard and your backyard for years to come. Your children are not going to want to live here, like you lived here, after your parents gifted you this land." So it's just amazing to me that we continue to do this as a county, and I know four and a half years ago when this was approved, that maybe we weren't thinking about this as much. But now that we can see climax, we can see these areas, we can see that this land has just been decimated, and that, that, how do you get it back? You don't. Who's going to take these solar panels away in 25 years? So I felt sorry for myself when I saw all this, and I saw that our farm is right next to this. I feel terribly horrible for these hundreds of people that live right on top of this community. I have rental property there. I have people that fall over themselves to get down there because they love this area. They have grown up there, they have had family there, they continue to want to live there. How are we going to get people to want to be in this community if we continue to do this? So as far as an extension, I don't know what else they're asking for, that all was a lot of grief to me, but as far as an extension, is four and a half years not enough? Can we just go ahead and not grant this extension and keep our land the way it should be, and keep these families in a community that they have grown up in, that they love, that I love? That, 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 it just makes no sense to me. So in 100, what's a 100-foot landscape? How long does it take a tree to grow 100 feet? So how long will we have to look at this? You're driving down 57, it's a main thoroughfare to get to Richmond, to get to Halifax. You're going to have layers on each side of the road trying to get down this windy road, logging trucks, various things. So I'm extremely opposed to it, and I feel horrible for the people in this community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pam Adams.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I'm sure people will be booing when I finish. But first of all, I want to tell you, my name is Pamela Adams, I'm from the Java community, I've been there 65 years. I do own one of the land tracts that will be part of this Shaco Solar Farm, and I promise you, I will not be a millionaire. I am a multi-generational family. My father owned this land, and tended this land, my brother tended this land, my grandfather tended this land, so it's not like this land was not in our family also. I was excited when Turtle Energy talked to us about these four amendments, because that's just what they're asking you to do tonight, is to approve these four amendments. Because they wanted to make sure that the setbacks and the landscaping buffers are in place, and yes, 150 feet is not a lot of feet. That's only next to property lines. It's 200 feet when we talk about residential property, and in that 200 feet, you will see 100 feet of landscaped areas comprised of existing vegetation supplemented as needed with a staggered row of planted trees and large shrubs. So the first row will be a variety that reaches a minimum of 25 feet. None of the solar panels is going to be 25 feet. The second row will be 15 feet. All trees planted will be at least six feet. So this project will also increase tax revenue in our county. Now, we may not need tax revenue in other parts of the county. In Java, we do. If you've looked, if you've even been to Java lately, we have a stoplight on the bridge that's been sitting there for two years, and the county doesn't have enough money to replace the bridge. We also have two of the worst dumpster sites in Pennsylvania County. Now, I know that's not, that's not what you're here tonight for, but I just wanted to say, we need...
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you. Hey.
John Towns.
Good evening. I'm speaking on the solar field farms, and I consider the homes that are there, and I haven't got their way I'm living at, but I'm speaking in the case that it does, I would be against it for the reason that far as I know of it, it's supposed to increase the land value. But who will get that increase? That increase will go to the solar. You may, the ones that sell to you, they will increase, but what about the homeowners and their land, and their property? Well, what would it be? I don't see where it would be an increase. So, I ask you to consider the homeowners, the properties, as you consider this, that we may not have to lose our value for the increase of something that we don't get any benefit out of. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that we have signed up.
All right. Anyone else here to speak to this case that didn't sign up?
I did sign up, I signed on the wrong sheet.
Okay.
Okay.
State your name for the record, please.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Bethany Osborne, new landowner in Java, Virginia, on property bordering the solar panels. I'm here tonight to oppose any amendments to this. They've had three years since these contracts were signed. There were very specific agreements within those contracts. They are now asking for an extension. I'm asking you not to grant that, and go ahead and allow these to expire, and see what else could be for Pennsylvania County, keeping our agricultural land in agricultural production. Thank you.
Anyone else signed up on the wrong sheet or came in late, wanted to speak to this case? All right. 7:48, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of S-25-003, the request to amend and extend the time, I am making a motion that we do, if you bear with me one second. Yes, I request that we do make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve this request with conditions.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Please cast your vote.
And just for clarification, that is all the amendments to conditions that staff recommended?
Yes, that includes all. Thank you.
Motion passes, six yes, one no. At 7:50, case R-25-001 is now open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-25-001, Valico LLC has petition to rezonate, well, I'm sorry, before we open that, we need to go back to the item that you all added, removing that parcel.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item, well, it's going to be under item A.
Yes, we need to do that before their motion is heard. They have submitted a request to staff that parcel number 2426-69-3980, which is owned by Archie Motley and Byron Motley, be removed from their application, because this is a reduction in the scope of the project, this can be done without having to re-advertise the project, but it does need to be voted on by the Planning Commission. So, you would all, you all need to make a motion, and then vote on whether or not to allow them to remove this parcel, and then after this is handled, then we can move on to their, their public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to move to allow the withdrawal of parcel number 2426-69-3980 from the rezoning case of R-25-001, and to allow the remaining application to proceed as amended.
Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Webb.
Hang on, give me just a second, we're speaking.
There we go. Should be able to vote now. Motion to remove parcel 2426-69-3980 passes, seven yes, zero no. All right, at this time, before we get started, Ms. Ragsdale, we will take a 10-minute recess, okay? All right.[1242.53] All right.
We'll get started here in just a moment. Please find a seat. We're going to get started. Eight oh five, I'd like to call us back to order. And just a couple of housekeeping items. If you could, limit your comments tonight and direct them to this board and to this board only, if you would. Three minutes for speakers who are here to speak tonight. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Emily Ragsdale for summary.
And I will preface this by saying that since that parcel was removed, my acreage totals are not correct. They will be less than what's stated, but I have not had time to do the math. So case R-25-001, Balco LLC has petitioned to rezone thirteen parcels totaling 763.16 acres located on or off of State Road, 865 Chalk Level Road, State Road, 691 Mill Creek Road, State Road, 692 Transco Road, State Road 1447 Robin Court, and State Road 1439 Jackson Lane in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District and A1 Agricultural District to M2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for a private utility, a natural gas power plant, and data centers. Once the property is rezoned to M2, all uses listed under section 35-402 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Balco LLC is here to represent the petition.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Stephen Gould. I'm an attorney with PLDR Law in Danville. Got a presentation which hopefully...
I think they're working on getting that pulled up for you right now.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I know a number of you we have seen at one or more of the three community meetings that Balco has held over the last few months. First, at the community center here in Chatham, followed by a meeting in Riceville, and most recently in December, a meeting at Hurt Elementary School. Our goal tonight is to continue the conversation that we have begun with those community meetings and continue to share information about what this project entails, what it would mean for the county, and including the many benefits that we believe would be provided.
Dale.
I'm going, yeah. Let me take a minute as we begin just to provide a quick introduction of the team that is working on this project. Many of you have met Mr. Erfan Ali, who is the CEO of Balco, who is with us tonight. His colleague, Tim Hope, who is the Director of Finance of Balco, you may have met at our first meeting. Part of the engineering team, we have Mr. Fred Shanks, who is joining me this evening and will be making comments of Shanks Associates in Danville. Tim Reynolds of Hurt &amp; Profit, who would have been here but is under the weather. And again, as I mentioned, I'm Stephen Gould with PLDR Law in Danville. Want to share just a little bit about what the role of a developer is on a project like this. Balco is a firm with seven employees based in Northern Virginia. As Balco undertakes larger development projects, that number will grow. The company is set up to flex as project needs dictate. Again, Mr. Ali is here, and you have met Mr. Hope. Mr. Ali has more than three decades of experience across the industry sector. He's been involved in a number of power generation projects. One of the ones that is most recent was the Chickahominy Power Plant outside of Richmond. That project was fully permitted and ready to move forward, but was not able to do so based on the gas supply not being allowed. So that is a project that, most recently, Mr. Ali and Balco had worked on and was ready to proceed, but for that one obstacle. The role of a developer in a situation like this is akin to what we would think of with a traditional real estate developer. That is, an entrepreneur who is aggregating property, who is taking care of permitting and zoning decisions, bringing a project together, and then, once that happens, helping to turn it over to other end-users who are able to take the project that final mile. So just as a developer, often, it's not the one who is building the houses in a residential neighborhood. Mr. Ali and Balco are not going to be creating data centers here. They are going to be establishing the conditions that allow for these end-users to come into the project. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. One of the things that we learned when we were having our different community meetings was that while data centers are absolutely essential in our modern world, we needed to do a little bit more to talk about what exactly data centers are and explain the centrality of them to everything that we do and rely upon now. So just as a quick overview, data centers are facilities that store and share the applications and the data that make the world go round. The apps on our phone, everything that we are purchasing online, the cloud-based document storage that you have at your places of business. Data centers are absolutely central to our lives and to the modern economy, and that is not slowing down. The demand for data centers continues to increase substantially, and the continued growth of them is not so much a question of space, but is there available energy to power these data centers? That is the X-factor at this point. And it seems like every day, we hear more and more about how artificial intelligence is changing our lives. You run a Google search, and the first thing that you get at the top of the page is what AI thinks you're looking for, which is, that's a new one on me. The interesting thing about AI, however you feel about it, is that it is a resource and a tool that is not going away, and it only is going to be taking additional energy. So as data centers are continuing to grow in their prevalence, they also continue to have that energy need to power AI, because whether it is medicine, law, many other fields, AI is allowing for additional efficiencies, a great amount of progress in our world. But again, it is something that is requiring energy. So like I said, energy is the X-factor. Want to talk a little bit about the site that is before you on this slide. And as Ms. Ragsdale mentioned, with the removal of that one parcel, rather than being slightly north of 760 acres, we're just a little bit south of 750 acres now. This campus is along Chalk Level and Transco Roads. Mr. Shanks is going to walk you through a little bit more of how the campus is laid out shortly. Wanted to share with you an explanation for why this location, why this area along Chalk Level and Transco for this particular project. And it really is as simple as the availability of gas, the availability of fiber acreage, and again, the existing industrial presence that exists in part of this area with Transco Village. This is an area that has existing pipeline infrastructure, so there has been an industrial component to this area for some time. If you either were attending or happened to see a presentation that the county's Economic Development Director, Matt Rowe, made to the IDA last month, he talked about there being three locations in the county that are suitable for data centers. One is the location along 58 East in the Ringgold area that has been approved for the Anchorstone Data Center project. Another was Berry Hill, and the third was the project in front of you. As he mentioned, data centers do not meet the requirements of success that RIFA has established for the projects that it's going to approve to go out there. Also, from a technical standpoint, while there is gas available at Berry Hill, it is not nearly what is available at this site. So by process of elimination, this is the sole available site right now in Pennsylvania County to support a project like this. Going to walk you through at a high level some of the details of the project before I turn things over to Mr. Shanks. As you'll see, there are two separate development sites. They are connected by utilities and different project infrastructure. On the western end, which is going to be the slide on the left there, and if you can kind of in your mind, just turn that clockwise one turn so that it is running north-south, you have a cluster of six data centers. On the right, which is on the eastern end of the project, you have six additional data centers in a cluster along with a power station. So that is really what sets this project apart in the minds of Balco. Again, energy is such an X-factor when it comes to data centers. There is a years-long wait, in many cases, for existing utilities, public utilities, to provide the energy that is necessary to power these data centers. That is not an issue here because there's the ability to tap directly into the Mountain Valley Pipeline, which has its terminus in this area. The data centers are two stories tall. They're going to be forty feet in height, 396,000 square feet each. The goal for Balco, as I mentioned, is not to build and operate these data centers, but to prepare what we refer to as pad-ready sites that can be sold to the end-users. So Balco gets the site ready in terms of acquiring the land, going through this process, getting the land ready, and then is able to turn that over to an end-user for development and creation of the data center. Want to talk with you a little bit about the power station, which I know is something that many folks are curious about. It is natural gas-fired. There are two kind of phases of the power station that are anticipated. The first would generate 300 megawatts of energy. That would happen through aerod derivative mobile turbines. Then ultimately, they would be replaced by permanent turbines that can generate up to 3,500 megawatts. As many of you are likely aware, whenever you start to talk about power generation, that quickly leads into a discussion of what I have referred to here as the robust regulatory framework that exists for any power producers. So whether it is the State Department of Environmental Quality, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, those are agencies that spend their time working to make sure that any existing and then new energy producers are adhering to some very strict guidelines. And I'll talk a little bit more about exactly what that means for the turbines that Balco would be using here. Unlike the data centers, the goal here is for Balco to own and operate this power station. So the power station would be created by Balco, would be run by Balco, it would sell the energy to the data centers that are anticipated to be created here. So this is not a situation where you have a developer that is looking to put something together and then head out of town. This is a developer that wants to create the opportunities for the data centers, but retain a significant presence in Pennsylvania County by operating this power station. The, a couple of other things just related to the power station that I do want to mention. The acronym that's often used when we're talking about new power station technology is BACT, B-A-C-T, stands for Best Available Control Technology. That is what the government is looking to in terms of making sure that new infrastructure is operating as efficiently as possible, that emissions are reduced to the greatest extent possible. And the, one other item that I want to mention is, there's been some discussion and some questions in our meetings about, I've read that data centers are such significant consumers of energy, and in other areas, that has led to an increase in utility bills for other customers in the region. That would not be the case here. Balco, this is a self-contained energy project. It is not undertaken by a public utility that is investing a significant amount and then needing to recoup that from other ratepayers. You have here a developer that is making this investment. It will be recouping its investment directly from its customers, who are the data centers, not anyone outside of this campus. Going to turn things over to Mr. Shanks now to talk a little bit about some of the nuts and bolts of this from an engineering perspective, particularly water and wastewater, and then I'll come back and share a few additional thoughts.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is Fred Shanks. I'm part of the team here tonight. I'm here to talk to you about utilities and about the site development plan that you have before us. My apologies, is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you look up on the slides right now, we've got two slides up there. The slide on the left represents a water line that we're hoping to put into place. We've got permission to look at that option to provide the initial water for the site. That water would come from a terminus at the end of my twin lane over in Chatham and extend about 2.3 miles to the site. Usage for water by data centers has decreased in recent years and continues to be based on advances in technology and end-users' sustainability commitments. Ideally, we'd use that first water line connection on the left to supply 700 gallons, 700 K gallons per day. Several routes have been studied. That is the most feasible for the initial development. Also, the town of Hurt has been in negotiations with Balco, and they are planning to provide 2 million gallons per day from the system in Hurt. That system would include upgrades to the Hurt system and also extension of the water line down to the site from Hurt. That would open up a large, large area for future development to have water and sewer in that location. Both locations, the Chatham location and Hurt, have already got the permitted usage permitted by the state. Balco would make all improvements to the system to extend it to the site. There would be no cost that would not be incurred by Balco. Wastewater, actually, the second option, which is to Hurt, from Hurt, is on the right-hand side. That would come down 29 corridor, staying out of the limited access and continue down 29 to the site. Wastewater is, right now, we can tie in to the Chatham wastewater treatment plant down off of Davis Drive. It appears, we're still studying that route. It appears it could be done either with one pump station or no pump station. That would extend about almost five miles from Davis Drive to the property on Chalk Level Road. So summarize, water usage by data centers continues to decrease. Ideally, we'll purchase 700 K gallons per day from the Chatham site, and then support will be negotiated from Hurt for $2 million gallons a day. Balco has committed to pay for all required infrastructure improvements. Before you now, you can see the site layout. On the right-hand side is the power generation side. There are two different... There are two different power generation options. The initial option would be a smaller set of temporary turbines, and then eventually the new turbines, the larger turbines would come in and be at the same location, just beside where they are now. From there, heading west, are six data center buildings, and then it crosses under Chalk Level Road and extends, utilities extend all the way up to the site on the left side, which is where there are six more data center buildings. So that's all I've got. We've got two locations right now where we're working with, that are feasible options, working with water, and we've got a pretty good solution on where the sewer will run. Just need to get that finalized as far as, once we get the rezoning done, we can start spending the money to have the final studies done. Thank you.
Okay. Just want to add one or two items before we move on, Mr. Chairman. On that slide, you'll see a figure that we believe is important, and that is that 40% of the acreage in this project, at least 40%, is preserved as open space. That is a figure that is still accurate even with the removal of the roughly 15-acre parcel that you approved before this public hearing began. And we'll talk about it a little bit more, but there is a significant investment in buffering and screening the property that is anticipated with this project that has been a point of considerable discussion and negotiation with Ms. Ragsdale and her team, and something that BALCO takes very seriously. Before we move on further, I want to address something that I think is a bit of an elephant in the room, and that is to talk about the earlier plan that BALCO had submitted and which was withdrawn back in November. It's absolutely correct, there was a plan for 2,200-plus acres that was submitted and withdrawn. BALCO has been upfront and transparent in communications with the public that it would still like to pursue a project of that size, but the proposal before you now is a proposal for just under 750 acres. That 2,200-acre project is not before you. Any expansion of the current footprint of this project would require two things. One is a traffic impact analysis required by VDOT that would be completed before any rezoning application were submitted and acted on. And more importantly, any further, any expansion further of the footprint of this project would require additional approval by the Planning Commission and by the Board of Supervisors. And there would be proffers, I would anticipate, that would be included in that project. Nothing that the Planning Commission has before it now, or that the Board of Supervisors would have before it next month, seals anything in terms of any future requests. Any future requests would be handled on their own merits, and certainly BALCO's goal is to prove its ability to put together a quality project. And if it has not done that, it can anticipate what the response from this body and the Board of Supervisors would be, but right now, again, we're just talking about an initial project of under 750 acres. One of the things that we have focused on in our discussions about proffers with Ms. Ragsdale and her team is making sure that concerns of neighbors are taken into account. And while it's a little tough to see on this screen, what you have is centered on the power station campus, you have a circle going out showing how many residences are within a half-mile and then a full mile of the power station component of this project. Within a half-mile of the power station, there are nine residences. Within a full mile of the power station, there are 28 residences. One thing also on the site plan that we are working to emphasize is just how traffic is going to be expected to reach this site. One of the items that was discussed at length in different community meetings was the impact on existing roads, the impact on folks who are commuting, and what it would mean to have additional construction traffic. So that is something that we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. What this shows is, and I'll again, kind of get to it in our discussion of proffers in a second, a construction management plan that would be negotiated with the county and submitted before any construction begins allows the developer and the county to agree upon and emphasize what roads are going to be used for ingress and egress from the project. And what we have talked about is taking every step that we can to de-emphasize use of Chalk Level Road, to use Route 57 as a primary state road, and then Transco Road to reach this site. That is not to say that there would not be any traffic on Chalk Level Road, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that, but 57 and Transco Road would be the roads that are emphasized. I'll talk a little bit more about other roads in a minute. I want to share with you some what we think are important figures with respect to the investment and jobs that this project presents. The power station component of it, I'm going to focus on that first. As you've heard, we would begin with mobile turbines, followed by permanent turbines. The expectation right now is the mobile turbines would entail an investment of approximately $360 million. That would increase to $800 million as permanent turbines are installed. Data centers are, the math there is a little bit different, and I want to walk you through how that is calculated. In the industry, typically, what is looked at is the cost per megawatt of energy that's used by the facility. Here, it is expected that that cost would be 29.5 million for a 300-megawatt buildout, which is what those mobile turbines, to get the project started, are calling for. That would entail a total investment of $8.85 billion by BALCO and the end users. $2.85 billion of that would be construction, and then $6 billion would be for the technology that makes those data centers run. Obviously, the investment in constructing the buildings is significant. The investment in the technology inside those buildings is enormous. The investment in jobs extends beyond just those, just the costs related to construction and the technology. One of the proffers that we have agreed to with the county is the construction of a new fire station built to serve this project, but it would not just serve this project, it would also allow the county to serve the surrounding community. So an additional fire station built at BALCO's costs and then turned over to the county once it is completed. There's also a commitment from BALCO and the proffers that we have negotiated to train first responders who would be reporting to the site and provide equipment purchases for them. Additionally, the proffers require that for the first several years, until a certain revenue target is achieved in terms of at least $5 million of new annual tax revenue coming into the county, BALCO would be on the hook for covering the costs for those first responders. So staffing, equipment, training, that would be the obligation of BALCO until that revenue starts flowing. And this last item builds on what Mr. Shanks was talking about a minute ago, in its investment in locally-owned infrastructure to support the project. I want to touch on a couple of items there. The locally-owned component is one of them. Whether you're talking about potential work with the town of Chatham or potential work with the town of Hurt, the initial investment to make these improvements possible would be at BALCO's cost, but then that infrastructure would be turned over to the locality to manage and use as it sees fit. Also, if the pipeline were extended from Hurt down to the site to provide water, the amount that the town of Hurt is able to withdraw greatly exceeds the 2 million gallons that is anticipated for this project. What that would mean is a pipeline that is going roughly 19 miles that other communities at the county could take advantage of to provide water for economic development projects for residential uses. Again, that's a pipeline paid for by BALCO that would benefit folks who are not connected to this project. In terms of jobs, people wonder, how many jobs are you talking about? Are these permanent jobs? What are the salaries that would be paid? Here are some numbers for you. At full buildout for the power station, which is that 3,500-megawatt power station, number of jobs is approximately 150 with an average salary of $90,000. Data centers, you're looking at 240 full-time equivalent employees, and that is based on a calculation of 20 employees per center, so 20 times 12, 240, with an average salary. So that is looking at the entire range of your types of employees, from those who do not need a tremendous amount of skill to work there, to those who are more highly-trained, average salary of $105,000. Construction, obviously, with, between the power station and the data centers, you're talking about a rather mammoth undertaking for infrastructure there, so we conservatively have said 1,000-plus. And obviously, the salary for those in the construction field is going to vary based on the trade, but you're talking about significant construction project and folks that are already in high demand there. Also want to touch on other benefits to the county in terms of tax revenue. The tax rate for the county is 56 cents per $100 of assessed value. So what that means here is an additional $5.6 million in real estate tax revenue generated for the county based on each $1 billion of assessed value. So certainly, I think we all know, construction costs and investment does not line up with assessed value. The assessed value is not going to be that high, but even if you're not getting dollar for dollar, you're still talking about likely billions of assessed value. The total anticipated construction investment between the permanent turbines and those data centers is $3.685 billion. Just to provide a little bit of context and a reference point, the publicized figure for capital investment in the Caesars Virginia Project in Danville is $750 million. So just a little more than one-fifth of what is anticipated here. There are also additional local taxes, the first of which is, provides potential for considerable revenue to the county, and I think that is putting it mildly, that is business personal property tax. That is going to be based upon the tax rate that is used, but also the percentage that is applied. Newer equipment is taxed at a higher rate than older equipment, but as Mr. Ali has indicated in prior community meetings and as we've seen in other localities, with a project of this scope, you're looking at tens of millions in additional revenue generated just from business personal property tax. During construction, you're looking at sales tax, mules tax, transient occupancy tax for all of the individuals who are helping to make the project a reality. And for a power station, once it's up and running, also the benefit of machinery and tools tax. What's not mentioned on here that I think is also important is, as construction is undergoing, there are any number of permit fees that the Community Development Office would be assessing, so that is an additional source of revenue for the county. The timetable here, I want to touch on briefly. The expectation is if the Board of Supervisors were to approve the rezoning request next month, the power station would be able to come online during the next fiscal year. So July, between July 1, 2025, and June 30, 2026, there really, sources of power for data centers cannot be identified fast enough, cannot come online fast enough. Same thing with the data centers, the anticipation, or the expectation is that the first wave of data centers would begin to come online during that same period, which is the next fiscal year, with the construction of the data centers finishing in the following fiscal year, '27. You're looking at a little longer for that fully-built-out power station to come online with the permanent turbines, but again, you're talking about the county being able to see progress and the revenue from this project in fairly short order. I want to spend some of my last few minutes talking with you about proffers. I know when Ms. Ragsdale completed her recommendation from staff, she indicated that proffers had not been finalized, that additional proffers were forthcoming. We had a lengthy meeting this past Friday, and more robust, built-out proffers have been submitted. I don't know if those have been provided to you yet, but want to sketch out a couple of items. These proffers have been negotiated over a period of several months, going back to September or October of last year. There is, importantly, one of the key items under the proffers is that if the land is rezoned M2, there is no other use of the land that is permitted other than use as a power station and data centers. No other use is permitted. So it's this or nothing in terms of the use of this land. For purposes of comparison, if you look at the proffers that were agreed to for the Anchorstone project on Route 58, while not completely open-ended, they do provide for some additional uses that would be beneficial to the county. Here, BALCO has voluntarily said, these are the only items that we are interested in. Staff requested, and BALCO has agreed, to rezone the land at its cost after a period of five years if the project has not proceeded. So this is not a situation where if the project is approved and nothing happens, that the land continues, will continue to be zoned M2 forever. It would be returned to its current designation, which is agricultural A1 or R1 after a period of five years if nothing had happened. You heard Ms. Whitehead mention earlier that the current zoning ordinance and the forthcoming zoning ordinance, as it's been amended and we anticipate it being adopted, are quite different in their treatment of power stations. The new ordinance has a very robust set of requirements that apply to power stations. What you will see in the proffer submitted by BALCO is a voluntary submission to many of those requirements. So even though they do not, under the current ordinance, apply to BALCO, BALCO has said, we will do this and this and this and this, and that is a good faith effort by BALCO to show that it is, it wants to do this the right way. Some of the items that are included are a decommissioning plan for the power station, so that is something that would come in with a site plan, a final site plan, indicating what the anticipated life for the facility is, if it were shut down or abandoned, what that means, who bears the cost of taking it down. There would be a bond that would have to be, a surety that would have to be posted with the county. Also, with the final site plan, there would be a plan submitted to mitigate light pollution from the power station, which is something that had been raised to us as a concern during community meetings, is what are we talking about in terms of light there? Also, a traffic plan would be included, I mentioned, as part of the construction management plan, to make sure that construction traffic is not, is not just happening willy-nilly. It is directed and it's done to emphasize certain routes so that disruption to landowners and others using those roads is going to be limited. This photo is a depiction of what BALCO envisions in terms of having a campus for these data centers. What you'll see here are increased setbacks beyond current requirements. Current setback requirements are 75 feet, and with the exception of a couple of parcels that either already have some industrial character or neighbor those, those setbacks are going to be 125 feet rather than 75. Also, there are enhanced buffers that Mr. Shanks has spent time on and has provided to the Community Development Office that show how the combination of vegetation... to the Community Development Office that show how the combination of vegetative, vegetation, berms, trees will be utilized to do everything possible to screen the property and provide that buffering so that, to the extent possible, any interference with folks' lives and experiences minimized. And again, I want to come back to that 40% open space figure. That is four times what is required under the current ordinance. That is, that current requirement is 10%, and Balco has said we will increase that to 40%. So again, this is not a project where 750 acres are asking to be rezoned, and every bit of that minus 10%, so 675 acres are being paved and built upon. You have 40%, so nearly half of the acreage that is going to be preserved as open space. Before I answer any questions you may have, I just want to offer a few final thoughts. From Balco's perspective, this is an opportunity for Pennsylvania County and our region to meet the moment, to take advantage of what is truly a unique combination of infrastructure, of gas and fiber that is in this area. There is the real potential for the county to allow this infrastructure to work for it in a way that it has not up to this point. So the pipeline has come through the county. We've not taken advantage of the pipeline to generate, to drive economic development in a way that this can do. Same thing, the visionary folks who 20 years ago helped to get mid-Atlantic broadband started, I don't think they knew exactly what that fiber would be used for, but this is, this is the next generation of, you know, of high-tech economic development. And so the fiber, the combination of fiber, combination of the ample gas, it presents an opportunity unlike what most have, and it is an opportunity that we hope the county will not let slip by. As I've mentioned before, time is truly of the essence with projects like this. The demand for data centers is not decreasing, and when you've got an available energy supply, it's all the more reason to keep things moving. So Balco wants to move quickly and make this a reality. And last but not least, I just want to mention one last item, which is that unlike most substantial economic development projects that come before the county, Balco is not asking for a dime, not a dime of incentive money, and I just want to make sure that's something that we emphasize. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I also realize there are many people who want to speak this evening, so I'm happy to step aside and let that happen.
Any questions for Mr. Gould? Michelle, go ahead.
Mr. Gould, thank you for the presentation. Some of these questions I have may be better suited for Mr. Shanks. I don't know if he wants to take questions. If not, I understand that. As you may well know, currently, as written for the comprehensive plan of Pennsylvania County, this would not exactly fit into that under my understanding. Would you agree with that?
Yes and no. There are industrial--
Folks, let him answer the question. Look, we'll have order, okay? If you can't help us maintain order, we'll ask you to step out, okay? All right. Repeat your question, if you would, Mr. Shelly.
I think you were about to explain how, in your opinion, it is yes and no that it does or does not fit into the comprehensive plan.
Yes, so we're looking across 750 acres at a pretty wide swath of land from Chalk Level to Transco, and a portion of that is slated for industrial growth, not the entirety of it. There's a mix of uses that are anticipated under the comprehensive plan, but there is an industrial component that is already there, and I think that is based on the fact that with Transco Village, you have a, you've had a significant investment over decades for the utility of natural gas. Would also emphasize, though, that the comprehensive plan is slated to be revisited. I believe that it is, largely reflects work from 2000, 2010, has not been substantially and critically reviewed or revisited since then. The world has changed a tremendous amount in that time, and when you look at, again, not just the acreage, but the available gas, the addition of the MVP terminus in the area, the fiber that exists, I would suggest that as the comprehensive plan is reviewed and is redeveloped, that this is an area that because of those assets is going to have a different, comprehensive plan would have a different flavor for this area than it currently does now for the entirety of it.
Thank you. You mentioned that Balco, as a company, and I want to, I guess, reflect on its owners as well, would be the sole management of the power plant. Is that correct?
That is the intention, that it would own and operate the power station.
Has Balco or any of its subsidiaries or owners ever run a power plant of this size or at all before?
So in terms of, I would say, there have been decades of experience in the industry, certainly with the contacts that Balco has, the ability to make sure that folks with the necessary experience are brought on, that is something that can absolutely be accomplished. So the fact that there is not a power station that is owned and operated right now by Balco is not determinative of their ability to do that in this case.
I have a question about the water supply, which I don't know if Mr. Shanks, again, I was asking if maybe he would want to take a question.
I will try and then turn it over to him if I can.
Okay, perfect. So my question to either of you, there was mention of, from Mr. Shanks, of 700,000, I believe is what he said, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, per day usage, and initially that would be used from Chatham, is that correct?
That's correct.
Does, do you or Mr. Shanks know how much the town of Chatham itself currently uses per day?
I'm not sure, Mr. Shanks, if you have that. I know that what we're looking at with both Chatham and Hurt is volumes that are presently permitted, that are available if a user came in now, that those localities have the ability to provide that amount under existing permitting. And Mr. Shanks, I don't know if you want to--
Please, please come to the podium, Mr. Shanks. Thank you.
With some material improvements, the capacity of the town of Chatham will be, is, will be at about half of what overall permitting allows.
And when you say about half, you mean the combination of both the town and the power plant would only, would only use 50% of its availability?
I'm sorry, what's left out? Now, I was talking about what they use now.
Okay. Well, clarify that for me. I mean, so you're saying what they use now is about 50% of what they can use?
That they're permitted for, they would have to make some improvements to the plant, which Balco would help operate.
Okay, so currently, it is not capable of providing the necessary water, is that correct?
It is, it is capable. If they want to use it for the full amount, there's got to be some improvements to the water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you. I've got one, I believe, one more question, or two more, actually. What is the projected life of the facility?
Which facility are you--
Well, the power plant, I'm sorry. The power plant is more specifically what I'm referencing.
Sure. I know that there are current power stations constructed in the 1950s that are still operational, so you were, no one is looking to undertake an investment like this without decades after decades of useful life. And that is something also that, as part of the decommissioning plan, would be provided to the county, that it would ensure that that figure is kept current and reevaluated every five years so that the county is aware of what the timetable is, what the costs of any decommissioning would be, and that there's appropriate surety to make sure the county is not handling the costs of any decommissioning if, for whatever reason, the operator at that time were not handling it.
Okay. There was traffic mentioned in your slide, but as I understood you, the project has been downsized so that currently it would not require its traffic study. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
So how is Balco going to determine what effects that it may have on the traffic as currently proposed? Are they planning to do a traffic study of its own? I mean, have they done one? Because I heard in your presentation that what traffic was mentioned, but I didn't see what Balco's opinion would be on its, the traffic impact currently.
Sure. So with respect to construction, obviously, you're looking at a rather intensive use of the roads, and that is why, as part of the construction management plan, there would be an emphasis on the upfront to keep as traffic on chalk-level road as minimal as possible and make sure that it's directed to Route 57, which is a primary state road, and also to Transco Road. One thing that I didn't mention, and I appreciate, Mr. Shelton, your question giving me the opportunity to say this, the proffers also are very explicit that roads like Neighborhood Lane, Jackson Lane are not to be used for construction absent an emergency. So you are having an emphasis on these roads that are believed to provide the best access for construction, and then making sure that we are keeping traffic, especially construction traffic, away from other roads. Once you have the, once the project is built out, you're looking between the power station and the data centers, and the power station, this is only after you get to that 3,500-megawatt facility, you're looking at 390 employees across 750 acres. There are vehicle trips associated with that, but I would submit to you all that VDOT has its trigger for a traffic impact analysis for a reason. That's not to say that there is no traffic, that that traffic is not meaningful to folks. What I can tell you is that there is not a requirement for a TIA at this point, but that doesn't mean that with proffers and then going forward, that Balco is not going to be as thoughtful and intentional as it possibly can be to keep in mind traffic impacts as the project moves forward.
Mr. Gould, do the proffers define what emergency is for the use of those roads?
Not presently, but they absolutely can.
Okay. And the last question I have is transitioning back to water with the Hurt facility. Has Balco done any investigation or any research or made any ground on finding out if that is possible for them to tap into, from a regulatory standpoint, tap into the Hurt facility?
Absolutely. There have been considerable discussions there. My understanding is that, based on prior industrial use, Hurt has a permitted ability to withdraw 14 million gallons per day. We're talking about just 2 million gallons, so 1/7th of that, to support this project. Again, if that pipeline is built, that's, I'm not great at math, but the difference there is 12 million that could be withdrawn if it were maxed out and you, and put to other uses, whether it's economic development or residential. So to answer your question, yes, sir, there have been a lot of discussions, including getting down to the nitty-gritty of knowing that truly an additional treatment facility is likely to be, is likely needed in Hurt, and Balco has committed to picking up the cost of that.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
I've got one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Gould, thanks for coming. And going back with what y'all have already been talking about with the water, has anybody made contact with VDOT? I understand that Hurt's got the water, but can we move the water?
Yes, sir, there have been discussions with VDOT. The engineering team has looked at several different paths. As Mr. Shanks alluded to in his comments, there are some restrictions with VDOT in terms of using limited access portions of highways. VDOT is very specific about what can, what can be run in the right-of-way there. They like to limit that to telecommunications infrastructure, but much of that 19-mile stretch, if we were to use 29 rather than an alternate route, much of that, it has right-of-way that's not subject to quite as much scrutiny from VDOT, and we believe there are, I guess the short way to put it is, many different paths that we could explore. There have already been some initial conversations with VDOT. They understand what our goal is, and we're certainly committed to working within the existing process and finding the way to make it happen.
Thank you. Emily, has anybody from staff reached out to VDOT to get any of their feedback? I wish one of them would have been able to come tonight or at least had a letter or something to show that, you know, VDOT's involved in this and their opinion of it.
So I cannot give you their opinion of it, but I was copying on an email on the 6th to VDOT, asking them about the potential of using limited access right-of-way and if there were other alternate routes. So I do know that those discussions have been initiated at this point. The depth of those discussions, I cannot speak to that.
Ms. Ragdell, that was January 6th?
Yes.
I would just add that there are, there have been, again, multiple routes that have been explored for piping that water down, not just along Route 29, but an alternate route that uses existing alternate right-of-way. So at this point, I think what is, what is key is that those discussions have begun, but they have been, there has been time and effort spent by the engineering team to figure out what some of those, I don't even want to call them obstacles, but what some of the limitations may be, so that going forward, we know that there are paths forward and that there's a process that you have to work through. There is, at this point, in the process, we're just at the rezoning phase, there is absolutely a desire by Balco to share as much information as possible, and here, that is, again, exploring several different paths, and that would follow on, hopefully, doing some initial draws from Chatham for the first phase of the project. But you could absolutely expect, if the rezoning is approved, for those details to be ironed out, and obviously, if there is not a, if there is not a path with one route, alternatives would be explored, and so, you know, if there is, there is not the ability of Balco to force something that doesn't otherwise, that's not otherwise permissible, so I would just add that.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. May.
Engineering is not in my department, but tell me how you're going to pump this water all the way from Hurt to Chalk Level. Is it just one pump going to do it? Is it that strong to do it, or you have to build another one along the way?
May I phone a friend? May I phone a friend to ask? Turn that over to Mr. Shanks.
Just curious. That's what we hear for, is to find out answers.
If you don't mind, I'd like to answer the previous question a little bit differently because I was involved in some conversation with VDOT regarding using the 29 right-of-way to build that line from Hurt to site. Tim Reynolds from Hurt and Profit has contacted Jay Craddock, who responded to the letter, indicating, Jay indicating to Tim, that the concerns he had were totally related to work within limited right-of-way, which would be the bypasses around Gretna, any other bypasses. Non-limited highways was not his concern. He specifically said his biggest concern was, that would require some state, higher level approval would be to use that right-of-way, that we don't, we don't plan on using. We've got alternate plans that stay off of that right-of-way. So that's to answer your first question. Second question, we're not far enough along to know, design-wise, how much we're going to have to pump, what the pressures will be. Got to get some real good survey data and engineering data to do that design. So whether it be one or two pump stations, I don't know. We don't know.
It's going to have to be a powerful one in my vision.
I could tell you, the wastewater treatment plant would have to have it.
Yes.
Probably won't.
And are you saying the right-of-way would come from VDOT, not the landowners? You would not take any of their land? You would not have to go through a right-of-way or easement with the landowners, is that correct?
That's partially correct. It'd be a little bit of both. Where permitted in VDOT right-of-way, you know, we'd have to submit to VDOT, they'd approve it or not, it could be relocated off and easements obtained.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if the highway department doesn't give y'all permission, you'll have to go to private property, won't you? For the, for the water line?
Yes, we'd have to go to private property. There's permitting process at the highway-- There is a permitting process that the highway department would implement in order for us to do either, because we're going to have to be in the right-of-way some anyway. It's a matter of what locations, we'll have to have-- anyway. It's a matter of what locations, we'll have to have survey data to do, to determine that.
One question, one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Brown.
Along those lines, if, if you were not allowed to use VDOT's right-of-way and you were having, having to go to private property owners and those private property owners denied your right to such easement, would you then ask the county or another governmental entity to take that property?
I don't foresee any imminent domain being used in any part of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Any other questions? Any other questions? I had just one question. Mr. Gould, you, you referenced an email, January 6th to VDOT. Was that, and that was to who at VDOT?
Uh, to Jay Craddock.
And you're, you've referenced some proffers that I'm not, that I'm not familiar with, that I don't have in my, in my packet, that have been provided, I think to Emily?
There. You have a copy at your, at your desk.
Okay. And when did these proffers come in to Emily's office?
In their, in their current form?
Yeah.
So there was a, a current version yesterday afternoon that did not be substantial changes. There were not substantial changes from the prior version, which was provided at our meeting last Friday. But the, all of the changes up to this point that we have made have been, and Mr. Ragdell can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong or if I'm misspeaking here, responsive to items that have come out of those conversations with staff.
Okay. All right. And you, you're aware that, that staff is at this point recommending denial?
Yes, sir. I did see that, but also saw what I believe was-[726.12][726.12](APPLAUSE)
Continue, please.
Yes, sir. Saw what I believe was an important qualifier there, which was that the final proffers had not been submitted and staff was reserving the right to, to reassess that recommendation in light of proffers once they had come in.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gould?
I have one for Ms. Ragdell.
Yes, Mr. Sheldon.
Not to put you on the spot, but since you have received those, have you changed your recommendation or have you had enough time to make any additional recommendations or what?
I would say at this point I've not had enough time. We got some updated site plans that refer, reflected some things that were in the proffers. We received those yesterday as well as the final version of the proffers, which did have some additional edits that came out of our meeting Friday. We were closed yesterday. Today has been spent, the majority of the day today has been spent preparing for this meeting, so I have not had adequate time to review those. So I do not feel comfortable saying one way or the other if, if anything has changed at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Any other questions while we have Mr. Gould? All right. Thank you, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mrs. Ragdell, I believe you have a couple people signed up.
Just a few. Elisa Davis.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm glad I was able to be the first one to speak tonight because I want to make a point of clarification right off of that, which is that no one from the Balco group has spoken directly with the town of Chatham staff or town council about the use of our water system. Only our capacity, only confirming our published permitted capacities. Okay? The citizens of the town of Chatham have some serious concerns about the impact of the proposed Balco project on our natural environment, our businesses, and our quality of life. To that end, on November the 4th, at the regular meeting of the Chatham Town Council, we drafted, voted on, and approved a resolution as follows. Whereas Balco, a company based in Herndon, Virginia, has proposed an, at that time, 2,233-acre data center campus, campus, and onsite power generation stash, station project in Pennsylvania County, just outside of the corporate limits of the town of Chatham. And whereas Balco has filed a rezoning petition with the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission requesting to rezone the land it requires for the project from residential and agricultural districts to industrial districts, specifically heavy industrial. And whereas the 2010 Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 8, on pages 15 and 21, specifically states that no industrial development should, excuse me, that industrial development should be avoided on prime farmland and agriculturally significant areas, so as not to create significant impact on residential areas, prime agricultural lands, or public facilities. And whereas the Council of the Town of Chatham, after performing its due diligence, strongly believes that neither the project proposed by Balco nor the proposed rezoning of the subject land would serve the best interests of the citizens and businesses of the town of Chatham and Pennsylvania County, Virginia, therefore be it resolved that the Town, Council of the Town of Chatham, Virginia, strongly opposes the project proposed by Balco and the rezoning of the land in Pennsylvania County, which in accordance with 2010 Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 8, pages 15 and 21, specifically states that industrial development should be avoided on prime farmland and agriculturally significant areas, so as not to create significant impact on residential areas, prime agricultural lands, or public facilities. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Mr. Darrell Woodallton, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and Mr. Nathan D. Harker, Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, immediately upon signature, which was submitted and received by Ms. Ragdell on November the 6th.
All right. Thank you.[1001.62][1001.62](APPLAUSE)
Aubrey Myers.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In last week's Star Tribune, there was an article on the front page about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan presented to the Board of Supervisors. On the back page of the same paper was some propaganda pertaining to the proposed data center. Now, your first question is going to be, what does Parks and Rec have to do with a data center? Well, that plan, 124 pages long, I read all of it, has got some brilliant things in it for the county that is needed. The youth and the senior citizens of this county basically have very little recreational facilities, as far as youth baseball, youth softball, to walking trails for the old people like me, to bicycle trails, and whatever. This data center will bring in, as been mentioned previously, millions and millions of dollars. That is a blank check, more or less, for the county to spend on this recreation plan. And in addition to the recreation plan, you get the County Capital Improvement Plan, the Schools Improvement Plan, and probably a dozen other plans. And one thing that every plan requires is money. And very few people in the county want to see another tax increase and property values go up and all that stuff to raise the taxes. Economic development is a solution to what the county needs. And we hear a lot about farmland. Tobacco and textiles drove the economy of this county for years, from the founding of the county up until a few years back, and, you know, tobacco farming went away, as we all know. Textile mills, Dan River Mills and Quapman Mills went away. And, you know, I've been around a long time, and majority of the people either worked in tobacco or they worked in textiles, and then some in furniture making. Those days are over. Pennsylvania County is the largest county in the state, and by being the largest county in the state, that means we've got more land. Now, I see all these signs as I drive down the road, as I ride my bicycle down chalk level road and other areas of the county, say about farmland.
30 seconds remaining.
And I look around and I say, what farmland? It's naturally growing but weeds, honeysuckles, and briars. And you don't see trucks hauling that stuff to the market. Since I only got a few seconds, in the Dammel paper today, the headlines was, "Staff Denied Data Center." I read the article three times. There was no names connected to that article. What staff are we talking about? That was a big question for me and a lot of other people.
Three minutes is complete.
How can anybody deny-
10 seconds.
Hundreds of jobs coming to the county? How can they deny millions of dollars coming to the county? We have 7,861 students in our schools. They going to need a job down the road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Davis.
My name is Wayne Davis. Everybody knows me by Dave. I don't go by Wayne too much. I live on Mill Creek Road in the Vanoss district. I'm a landowner with 275 acres that joins the proposed data center site. I am here tonight to ask you, the Planning Commission, to do what is the right thing. I hope y'all have done your homework. You were appointed by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors to help protect the property owners by regulating uses and ensuring that future development is compatible with the area, ultimately protecting property values. The zoning ordinance, ordinance should protect county residents and property owners from the undesirable impacts from this rezoning application. Rezoning 763 acres of land from agricultural to M2 industrial, heavy, for a natural gas power plant and data center is not the right thing to do. It is not the appropriate location. The proposal, proposed rezoning applicants, application affects many county residents from those owning one acre to 1,000 acres that we call home. There are six churches in this area. If passed, the project subjects us to pollution of air, light, noise, and possibly water pollution with 2 million gallons of water per day from Staten River being piped down 29 from Hurt to the proposed site. What will happen to the used water? What will happen to our roads? Balco does not want a road study until the next phase. And there will be a next phase if this is passed. The Dammel Register and Be, December the 20th, 24 issue, article entitled, "First Phase of Plan." Balco owner and founder, Mr. Ali, acknowledged that the new application presents only the first phase. I quote, "There is plenty of land to expand to." We'll see how the first phase goes. If it goes well and is successful, there can certainly is always the possibility of expanding. End quote. Really? Is this Pennsylvania's county that desperate, that greedy for money when it affects so many residents, landowners, versus the few that will be selling to Balco for this rezoning application? This, this is a scaled back, dramatic scaled back from what it originally was, 2,200 acres of land. This is still no compromise. The 763 acres rezoning application before you, now, Mr. Ali just wants to get his foot in the door-
10 seconds, sir. 10 seconds.
And then boom, back to the 2,233 acres. I'm here tonight to ask you, the Planning Commitment Committee, Commission, to do what is right. Please do not recommend the rezoning-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1467.41][1467.41](APPLAUSE)
Daniel Dalton.
Good evening, Mr. Dalton.
Good evening, Mr. Hawker. Good to see you. Thank you for letting me speak. Can you hear me? I just, I had a couple of questions to state, and I'll make it, you know, pretty casual, so I'm not going to go too far deep in it. But just a, a start, this is considered a hyperscale data center, not a normal data center hyperscale. So just as comparison, up north, 37 hyperscale data center on 1,700 acres is projected for a peak load of 7 gigawatts, which is almost as much as the entire state of Virginia used in 2020 when we were in COVID. Just, that's just a fact. So the gas usage, developer mentioned that the reason for the location was ideal because it was a termination point for the Mountain Valley Pipeline. How much gas is available at the pipeline? I think, we think that it's just an open speak it, but everybody in Virginia is after this gas to power temporary generators to power data centers. With Virginia's Clean Economy Act passed in 2020 to be 100% carbon-free energy by 2050, this project has a max service life of 25 years. If all of it could be powered by natural gas, who pays for the retrofit, new clean power plants, and restrictions when they become enforced? In the J-Lark study put forth by the General Assembly, it found that data centers do not belong in residential and agricultural neighborhoods. New regulations will be passed this year on data centers in the, in the next session, which got postponed, but it will be some type of regulation toward data centers in Virginia. So if the research-based data is found in the J-Lark study determining that they do not belong in these areas, why do we keep pushing them to these areas? We're trying to turn agricultural areas into industrial, heavy industrial. The noise level was not mentioned one time in the whole presentation, and for good reason. I took a trip to Northern Virginia to meet and listen to citizens that have dealt with data centers for years. During the town hall given by Delegate Lovejoy, he gave updates on the J-Lark report, new bipartisan regulations that will go before the General Assembly this month. But I heard teachers say that schools have to close in Loudoun County because they cannot hear the teachers. We're talking about improving our schools. They're talking about shutting theirs down and having to move them. It's a constant hum while they're in class. And it's, those data centers are a mile away from the school building.
30 seconds remaining.
The stories of the residents not sleeping at night because of a constant drone in their neighborhood, special elections being held to overthrow the Board of Supervisors. Let's see. Most data centers that I recorded in Pennsylvania County were 70 to 90 decimals. What they're not telling you in this, and why they will not mention decimals, is because that the gas, natural gas turbines are not part of the study and they are 95 to 97, 95 to 97 decimals per unit. There's eight that were on that proffer, so eight jet engines starting up and running on top of a low drone data center. What you get is what they call beat interference. So if you ever hear like a guitar whine, that's what it sounds like.
Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it.[1699.12][1699.12](APPLAUSE)
Susan Hunt.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hunt. I live in the Kalins Gretna District in Gretna. About a month ago, someone said to me regarding the data center, "You won't even know it's there." And I thought about that and I said, "Well, I guess if I don't go down chalk level road, I won't." But we found the same thing with all the solar panels. I didn't know until I went down Taylor's Mill Road how many thousands of acres had already been destroyed by the solar panels in so many other places in this county. The data center will not do good to keep us green so that we can still keep breathing good, fresh air, which is what we need in this county. We need to keep the bees, and we certainly don't need the residents in this area, looking out at a data center and not the trees and the greenery and not have to deal with that horrific sound that it comes from. Thank you for your
Jordan Key.
My name is Jordan Key. I lived in Chatham for about 25 years now. I talked with some members of this board- I talked with some members of this board and some members of the Board of Supervisors earlier in the week, and I appreciate you all taking the time to return my call and to talk with me. People that know me know that I am rarely speechless. I've got a lot to say. But I can't compare with the amount of information that has already been given you, so I'm gonna tell you something else. Rattlesnake Road, it's a real name of a road on the edge of Copper Hook Swamp in Alawite County. It's where I grew up. Sunday afternoons were the very best time of our lives. We'd come home from church, we'd take off our church clothes, we'd put on our old clothes, and we would get a gunny sack and we were out that screen door, bam, we were gone. We lived with my grandma and she would always yell the same thing to us. If it stinks, don't touch it. Okay, we're down the dirt road we go a mile or so with that gunny sack. We were looking for Coke and Pepsi bottles. We could collect those, take them to the store the next week and get candy. That was the delight of our lives and the high point of our entire week. We walked one particular day, and this made me think of this entire Balco project, and there was a paper sack folded up and kind of thrown in the ditch. Well, we poked it with a stick first and kind of rattled, like maybe bottles in it. And then my cousin poked it again. He said, "That smell is bad. I don't know what's in there." So we poked it again and the smell was worse, but we could smell bottle, hear bottles in it, hear the clicking. So we knew that we could get in there, we were gonna get something good, but what were we going to have to go through to get it? So we remember what grandma told us every time we slammed that screen door and went out. If it smells, don't touch it. So we didn't touch it. We kept walking. It wasn't worth it. We listened to what our elders said to us. We listened to what someone who knew more than what we did.
Thirty seconds remaining.
We bypassed it. I am asking all of you in the name of this county and what's right and the name of God and our country, what is right and moral, to say no to this entire Balco project. Thank you.
Barry Creasy.
Good evening. My name is Barry Creasy. I'm here with my wife, Elizabeth, and we live in the Chatham Blair's District. I'm here speaking, to speak, to express our opposition to the Balco request to have property rezoned to permit data centers and power plants in this particular area. I live on Fairview Road, which is just a few miles from this area, from the proposed site. I've lived in Pennsylvania County all of my life except for several years where I lived in Danville. I've been a member of Mill Creek Community Church since 1990, which is located at 3688 Chalk Level Road, which is at the intersection of Mill Creek and Chalk Level. My wife has been attending that church her entire life. Her mother has been there since 1957 and has played organ for 68 years. So we are very familiar with the area. If the request to rezone this property is granted, it will have a most detrimental effect, not only to our church, but the other churches in the area, residential properties and agricultural land. Who would want to attend church in a heavy industrial area with the noise and unsightly views? How are we supposed to conduct outdoor services, cookouts and other activities with our children? I feel sure that when the founders of our church were looking for a suitable location to build a church in 1883, that this location was selected for the beauty and tranquility of the location and the surrounding area. The beauty and tranquility of this area will be destroyed if this property is rezoned. We have already experienced negativity associated with this project. We have parsonage that we rent now and a potential future renter, we were talking with him about it, and as soon as he heard about this, it was a flat. Forget it. The church cemetery is located across the street. Generations of members, non-members are buried there. Parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, husbands and wives. People go to the cemetery for the peace and tranquility to be able to pray and to recollect on their loved ones. Please don't destroy that. Don't take that away from us.
Thirty seconds remaining.
This project has already destroyed untold relationships in this area. We're not against progress. We're against locating heavy industry and agriculture residential properties. It's your job to protect families, agriculture and churches from such ventures. This Balco project needs to be located near a designated for an enormous complex. Spend the time in whatever is keeping it from going to the mega site.
Ten seconds.
Please push for that instead of this particular area. It's not suitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy.
Dustin Dickens.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Dickens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live in the Tuscaloosa District. I moved back to Pennsylvania County with my wife in 2016 to become a youth pastor at a church in Danville. We decided to start our family here for various reasons. It's a community that we love and we're proud to be a part of. As we get closer to retirement, we've looked into buying land in the Whittles area and have spoken to friends and family who live in that area. They all seem to love that community. But with this rezoning project being on the table, it's made us think twice. Made us think twice about buying land in the area or even staying in the county altogether. We came from outside of Charlottesville and the growth that came in to where we were changed the whole community of where my wife grew up. I see the same thing happen in Pennsylvania County. See, there's something about the wildlife, the tranquility you get of living on 10 to 15 acres, the not having neighbors. Not only do those things become lost with a project like this, but either two things happen. The price of land skyrockets where our community can't engage in moving into those areas or even investing in, in helping themselves out, or the price of land tanks. They have to sell for pennies on the dollar. They lose out on family investments. They lose out on family land. And then they no longer have a dream because our elected officials decided to pass something that their constituents didn't want in the first place. See, I'm not against the county growing and I want it to grow as much as anyone here, but I think there's other places we could go with this and I believe there's other ways to go about it. And tonight I ask you to think about that. Thank you for your time.
Lexi Shellhorse, and she is speaking on behalf of the Coalition for the Protection of Pennsylvania County.
Good evening. From the Callens Gretner District. So previously I have attended two informational meetings about the Balco project. Both meetings, Mr. Ali stated that he had over 30 years of experience and Mr. Gold also spoke of that tonight. I think it's strange that he only gave one example of a project that was never built, which was Chickahominy Power Plant. Mr. Ali denied any opposition to the project, however, a simple Google search shows just the opposite. You would think with 30 years of experience that you would have an extensive portfolio of projects. Before tonight, the residents have received conflicting answers that left us even more confused and wondering why our local government would entertain this project in any capacity. In Hert, I asked again about completed projects, locations and dates of completion. Mr. Ali's response to me was, "Why is this relevant? My resume is not up for discussion. I don't need to answer your questions about my background. My resume is online. You can go to LinkedIn." Mr. Ali used words like estimated and anticipated like they are sufficient and factual. When questioned about jobs, there's a lot of different numbers. We've heard 84 data centers equals 700 jobs, but then 12 data centers equals 400. We heard different numbers tonight. You don't have to be a mathematician to know that these numbers don't add up. In Hert, he said he really didn't know. It could be more or it could be less because it was constantly changing and he stressed again that he really didn't know. Let me tell you what we know, because there have been dozens of us working, researching, gathering information. We've had meetings both in person and virtual with people who do know, people from Northern Virginia who have experienced data centers and the picture isn't very pretty. Time and time again, we have heard data centers employ very few people and most jobs are remote. We have been told more than once, his water usage estimates are extremely low and don't sound close to being accurate when compared with permits in other areas. Let's talk about text messages. I, like many other residents of the county, have received three text messages. The Consumer Protection Act states a business must obtain explicit written consent from individuals before sending marketing text messages. Not only did Balco break the law by sending them, but the messages were full of deceptions. One stated Pennsylvania families deserve more money in their pockets and our kids deserve a higher quality of education. Keeping our property taxes low, major investments in schools. Balco cannot cash that check. He has no authority to say any of this. When questioned in Hert, he replied, "This was anticipated." One of the text messages had a link. If you clicked it, it said, "If Mecklenburg County did it, so can we. Learn how they did it here." If you click on that link, it takes you to a newspaper article where Mecklenburg reduced their tax rate. Well, guess what, Balco? We did do it because in 2024, Pennsylvania County reduced their tax rate because of a general reassessment. This is common practice and this is also what happened in Mecklenburg County. In February of 2020, a Democratic State Senator sponsored a Senate bill, number 992. He said the bill was provided by a lobbyist for Balco and the proposed Chickahominy Power Plant. The proposed bill would have allowed him to skirt around the Virginia Clean Economy Act by providing carbon allowances. Is this his intention in Pennsylvania County to skirt around the Virginia Clean Economy Act? The Institute for Energy Economics and Financial Analysis warned investors to think twice before putting any money into a proposed natural gas-fired power plant in Virginia, stating "The rapidly moving transition to non-fossil generation resources is almost certain to turn the plant into stranded assets well before the end of their normal life expectancies." And lastly, just yesterday, the Falkir Times headlines read, "Prince William County Spending Nearly $500,000 to Fight Data Center Lawsuits." Microsoft is suing Prince William County over their 2019 and 2020 assessments at two locations. Also, Amazon is suing them for their 2020 assessments. Supervisor Tom Gordy of the Brentsville District in Prince William was quoted by saying, "These data centers come in and promote the value of data centers to our community in the amount of taxes that we will gain, and then they sit there and fight the amount of money they're supposed to pay in taxes." In March of 2024, Core Sites filed lawsuits against Fairfax County because they requested tenant identities at their rest and data center. I want to ask the committee tonight to vote no. I hope you realize that our county has sacrificed enough with industrial solar and our residents are prepared to fight to protect our rural areas and our quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Ken Moss.
My name's Ken Moss. I'm from Gretner. And what I'm trying to do here tonight, I want to add some engineering clarity to some of the numbers that you guys have heard, and with all due respect, I want to clarify what these numbers mean. What they're doing here, what they're proposing is a 3,500-megawatt gas turbine power plant to generate the electricity on site and to consume that energy on site. That is unprecedented. I don't think anyone comprehends what that means. In fact, there's nothing to compare that to. What this means is the 3,500 megawatts is equivalent to roughly 500 jumbo jets. It's the same technology. It's a braking cycle. A jet engine, the gas turbine, they're identical. So what they're talking about doing is installing what's equivalent to 500 jet engines down there, generate that electricity and consume it locally next door, which is equivalent to 35,100-watt light bulbs. That energy is going to be dispersed into the local environment through heat and noise, and nobody knows what the impact of that is. You can ask these folks, they can't tell you. There's nothing to compare it to. They are here because they think they can get away with this. Okay? The, several inconsistencies in what they've said, so the project is supposedly scaled back. So okay, they scaled back on the land amount, but they didn't scale back on the amount of electricity. Still 3,500 megawatts. That means the data center capacity will be matched to the power generation. So the illusion that it's a scaled back version is only in the land mass, but not in the data center capability and the impact on the environment, which nobody knows. Okay? So I'm asking you to, that really ethically and morally to do this to these people and to destroy this county because once this starts, there is no stopping it. And I'm asking you, please, to vote no on this. Now, I've got a, an example, if we can hear it. Can I play this? This is a 22-megawatt gas turbine. Okay, 22. The one they're proposing is 159 times greater than this. So I'm gonna try to play this so you can hear the high pitch. It's not just about the decibel level. It's the pitch, the frequency, the hertz, that nobody knows what the damage it does to humans and animals and whatnot. So I'm gonna see if we can hear this.
Thirty seconds remaining.
That's a 22-megawatt gas turbine plant. Multiply that times 159 and that's what you're talking about. That's the reality of what the impact. On the noise side, the data center, the humming, the noise side from the data center. Okay? You've already heard plenty of testimony about that.
Three minutes is complete.
But the amount of heat that's being rejected, that being rejected to the atmosphere down there, it's going to change the local environment. And I'm asking you to please vote no on this.
All right, thank you.
Dan Amos, and he is speaking on behalf of the Painton Community Church.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dan Amos. I've lived in Chatham with my family for over 10 years, but also have the privilege of being the pastor of Painton Community Church. I've been asked to share the following resolution on behalf of my congregation. Painton Community Church, a church with 132 years of spiritual leadership in the Whittles Community of Pennsylvania County, voted unanimously on January 5th, 2025 to oppose the rezoning request proposed by Balco LLC that involves a large-scale power plant and data center, mega site that impacts the communities of Chalk Level, Shiva... power plant and data center mega-site that impacts the communities of Chalk Level, Shiva, Mill Creek, and Whittles. We do so in light of the following. Concerns about how the evolving rezoning request creates an eventual industrial transformation in the Whittles community, which jeopardizes the peaceful landscape and overall quality of life of this church and the citizens living in Whittles. This proposal impacts our neighbors adversely in the Chalk Level, Mill Creek, and Shiva communities, and we feel a responsibility to stand with our neighbors. Also, concerns about the general health of our population in these communities, to include air quality and a safe water supply. After much review of a FOIA request by members of our community, it seems obvious to our congregation that there are too many open-ended questions to feel any sense of comfort for this kind of massive industrial development less than one mile from our church grounds. Also, concerns about fire hazards associated with data centers and how we mitigate risk to nearby homes, forests, and lands that surround our church facility. And concerns related to Balaco admitting the current proposal was offered to not trigger a traffic study on local road systems impacted by this project. Rural roads like Peyton, where our church is located, are not designed for heavy industrial traffic, and reconfigured road systems in all of the impacted neighborhoods would suggest a future of eminent domain-style governance over these communities when ultimate changes take shape. Also, concerns connected to the general gross disregard for the fact that rural neighborhoods are made of citizens and organizations that willfully chose to live in agriculturally-zoned and residentially-zoned areas for the very purpose of living away from industrialization and all that it represents in day-to-day life. And also, concerns about the future of our entire county and how our beloved communities and rural churches will be impacted if we continue to equivocate rural neighborhoods as landmass available for development. That "landmass" is per quote by Matt Rowe regarding data center development. Over the past two-plus months, local citizens have invested in much due diligence that suggests data centers and gas-fired power plants do transform communities and change their quality of life, but not for the better. The areas with the least inflammatory response from citizens on this topic have chosen to place data centers and their power sources in industrial parks. In summary, concerns from Peyton Community Church connect with our serving as a beacon of light for Jesus Christ, and we do attempt in all that we do to practice the teachings of Jesus to include scripture from God's Word. First of all, Mark 12:31, "Love your neighbor as yourself; there is no commandment greater than these." Second, we also offer scripture from 1 Timothy 6:10, "For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil." As we have heard feedback on this issue, it appears the only positive factor involved is money. That factor comes with major consequences in the case of this kind of industrial development in neighborhoods where people have built their lives. Our church implores all elected officials, appointed officials, and hired county staff to think about what example you are showing to our community if this proposal moves forward. It is with this spirit that we respectfully submit this resolution. And just a few comments quickly. I won't take much of your time, it's past my bedtime already, but the way I see it, at least part of the issue here is with the math. See, we talk about things like potential revenue, which, again, it's all potential. We haven't seen any of it yet. And we do so in terms of dollar amounts, and that makes sense for revenue. There's a problem, though, when we get to the cost. It's not fully described by dollar amounts because people pay the price. Now, I know math wisdom, maybe it's due to my own lack of understanding, but I've tried, and I've tried, and I cannot for the life of me find a dollar amount that justifies the human cost of this project. For the sake of simplicity, I tried to narrow it down and make it make sense while keeping the scope simple, one family. So what dollar amount justifies destroying the legacy of one family, built on the hard work of generations before? What dollar amount justifies destroying the dreams of one family for the generations that follow? What dollar amount justifies destroying the livelihood of one family, their investments in this community, and the ingenuity they bring? And what dollar amount justifies eventually driving down the home value of one family so low that they can't afford to leave? I'll be honest, try as I may, couldn't come up with one. But that's okay, because I don't really need a number. See, when some of those families that I serve as pastor to that live in this area, they come to me asking for prayer because they don't know what to do, they don't know where to go, they don't know why this is happening, and they don't know why the people who are supposed to protect them are doing this to them. I don't think they really want a number. I don't think you'll comfort them to know that we put a new computer lab in the school or there's a new coat of paint in the classrooms. I don't think that's going to cut it for them. And so with the congregation of Peyton Community Church, along with myself, we don't really understand how the Balaco project got this far. But we ask humbly that you put it down and put it down swiftly. Thank you.
I'm Darryl Campbell, and thank you for the opportunity. Just a few moments ago, Mr. Creasy spoke, and he is one of our deacons, and we also adapted a resolution on the 24th day of November. And I'll just make it very simple. Our church has been a member of this community since 1883. That's a long time. And the scale of this project literally would do this to us. In other words, we're the microphone, and here's the project. So you get the idea. We do have two rental properties that we probably would lose those two renters and probably would not get anyone to take their place, and that's a big part of our budget. We do have, as Mr. Creasy said, a cemetery, and it's a very precious cemetery. And I'll be honest with you, sometimes even now, when I conduct the graveside, you know, the traffic will block me out, and I have to almost yell to be heard, and I know I won't be heard, with all the combines and all the data center noise. So what will we do with that type of ministry that we offer, the cemetery? Is that even respectful to those who have been buried there over the years, the matriarchs, the patriarchs of Mill Creek Church? And then finally, we too are in agreement with everyone that has spoken against this tonight. We care about our neighbors. If our church was not even impacted by this, we still care about our neighbors. And this will hurt property owners and people's peace and freedom and tranquility and way of life. There's no getting around it. And so, as has just been said, is the dollar worth that? Is it really worth that? Doesn't the scripture say if we gain the world and lose our soul, and in this case, our freedoms, well, what have we gained? Thank you. I hope you'll vote against this.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Rogers. I currently reside in the Chatham-Blairs district, but we will soon be residents of the Bannister district. My parents moved to the Chalk Level community in 2013, fulfilling their dream of living on a beautiful farm and getting to experience a peaceful, quiet way of life. The dream then shifted that my family will one day build our forever home on the farm. My dad and I would walk the fields and try to map out the perfect location for our family's home. He wanted us to experience the tranquility that living on the farm had provided for him. After my dad's passing in 2021, fulfilling his dream of us moving to the farm was now my dream. For me, that dream was finally becoming a reality. We had a vision, a home that would stand for generations, a space where my family could gather, grow, and thrive. This was our future. Now halfway through our construction, something unexpected has happened. Balaco's plans to build a massive power plant and data center complex surrounds the very land that we have planned to call home. At their information meetings, Balaco claimed it was for the greater good. They argued that it was necessary for progress, for innovation, for the future, but the day after the meeting, I went to the new house site, and I looked around at the land, and I couldn't help but wonder, at what cost? This isn't just about losing a piece of property, it's about losing connections that span generations, heritages that just cannot be replaced. These developments would not just impact our home, they would destroy the natural landscape all around it, all in the name of progress. I've moved back to this area after college for a reason, and the idea of a giant industrial project swallowing up the land that has nurtured our families for so long is not just disheartening, it's devastating. And I don't deny the importance of progress, but I do ask, can we find a way to balance growth with preservation? Can we find solutions that don't require sacrificing the very land that sustains us? After all, there are other places, other options, that don't come at the expense of a family's dream or a community's heritage. It's easy to think of development as inevitable, but for those of us who live on this land, it's personal. It's about more than just land rights or financial compensation. It's about protecting the values and the connections that have made this place home. So today, I stand here not just as an individual, but as a voice for all of those who have felt the pull of their land and the desire to protect it. We must ask the hard questions. What kind of future are we building? Is it one where we bulldoze the past for the sake of progress, or is it one where we innovate, grow, and thrive while still honoring the past that has shaped us? As for your support, for your understanding, and for your belief that progress and preservation do not have to be mutually exclusive, together we can find solutions that protect our families, our homes, and our land while still pushing toward the future. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I'm Lisa Shorter. I'm a lifelong resident of Chatham, Pennsylvania County, and I reside in the Bannister district. I own a seventy-one-acre farm, of which I lease the pasture for cattle grazing. I'm located about a mile, as the crow flies, to this proposed Balaco site. I'm also restoring a 1790s historic home, Little Cherrystone, on the same farmland. This home was put on the National Historic Registry in 1968. I intended to restore this home to its former glory so that, long after I'm gone, others can appreciate the historical significance of this area. However, reservation since the proposal of this project. I'm also a business owner since opening Chatham Animal Clinic in October of 1992, right across the street. We currently are in the middle of a huge expansion of the old Dutch shopping center on North Main Street into a large and small animal clinic, which we employ thirty-three local people. I say all this to create a pattern of starting from nothing, working hard, long hours, day, night, and weekends, to achieve goals of expansion and progress. I ask that the county planning commission, as well as the board of supervisors in the coming week, to come together with us, the citizens, and form a committee to represent us and develop a plan of aggression and development for projects such as this, so that we, which are true, these projects should be put in true industrial sites, not farmland in the middle of rural communities. Why not Berry Hill? There's both gas, Williams, and MVP run by there. I know it because it runs right through the middle of my farm, and I know the land track. There is water, Dan River, there is acreage. I've heard all sorts of rumors. No one can tell me what is true. Is it that you'll have to split the revenue with the city? Is it, did the developers of Berry Hill add amendments to not include data centers and power plants? If so, why can't they be amended again? Is there not enough employment? Well, we just saw tonight, this is a lot of employment at high numbers. I ask each of you to consider, if this was in your own community, I really seriously doubt any of you would vote for it. I ask that each of you vote no to power plants, data centers, on large agricultural areas in our rural communities. We have already had enough land destroyed by solar and continue to do so. In closing, I'd like to read a quote from Gone With the Wind. It is actually Gerald O'Hara talking to his daughter. Do you mean to tell me, Katie Scarlett O'Hara, that Terra, that land, doesn't mean anything to you? Well, land is the only thing in this world worth working for, worth fighting for, worth dying for, because it's the only thing that lasts. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is John Hunt. I'm a member of the Bannister district. My family is called Chatham Home for over six generations now. As a little background, in 1909, my great-great-grandparents donated parcels of land for Hargrave Military Academy. In the school's namesake, John Hunt Hargrave was a member of my family. My grandfather owned Hunt Chevrolet, my grandmother's family ran Overby Real Estate, and my father now operates Hunt &amp; Company Restaurant just right up the street. All I'm trying to say is that my family has invested deeply in this community, and for generations, we've been proud to call this place home. After graduating from Chatham High School, I went to Virginia Tech to study agricultural economics. After graduating, I moved to Richmond to pursue a career. I quickly realized that the noise, the traffic, and the hurried pace of city life did not compare to the peace and sense of community here in Chatham. I miss the quiet roads. I miss the town where people actually waved back to you and everybody knew you by your first name. Therefore, my stay in Richmond was brief, as I moved back to Chatham to Chalk Level Road, where it all began. The thing is, no one forced me to move back. I chose to do so, just like so many of the folks behind me tonight. In 2022, at just the age of twenty-eight, I made the decision to invest in this community in the most profound way that I could. I purchased three-hundred-and-twenty-five acres on Pangton Road that I now call the Route Five Ranch. At just twenty-eight years old, I put my faith, my future, and the next forty years of my life on the line to build my dream here in Chatham. But now, my dream, my investment, and my home are all being threatened. The proposed data center will sit directly across the road from my farm, and if I had known about this development in 2022, when I purchased this property, I would have never taken the risk. I would have stayed in Richmond, miserable but resigned. Instead, I chose Chatham. I believed in Chatham, and I still do. If approved, this development will be the first step in a larger wave of industrialization, turning Chalk Level, Mill Creek, Shiva, and Whittles into a dumping ground for industrial expansion. This is not a temporary issue. This is a permanent change to the identity of our homes. So, from the bottom of my heart, I'm asking you all to vote no. Your decision tonight is about more than just one project. It is about the future of our community and our way of life. Please, please stand with us and preserve the sanctuary that generations before us worked so hard to build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Hunt, and she is speaking on behalf of the horse enthusiasts of Chalk Level Road.
Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, maybe defenders of our way of life. Thank you for gathering here today and to confront a challenge that threatens the very fabric of our rural communities, the rapid proliferation of industrial data centers in our neighborhoods. It's a crisis that is dressed in the sleek veneer of innovation, but underneath lies a threat to our land, our water, our air, and our identity. We acknowledge that digital infrastructure certainly is vital in this day and age, is ever-changing. However, placing these scale facilities in rural neighborhoods will instill the environment and the community integrity and way of life for over two-hundred-and-fifty families that will surround this. There are places for these centers. There are places like the industrial parks, old prison sites, sites that are far away from neighborhoods but still have the means to support these centers. At first glance, they may seem like a beacon of technological progress. They promise jobs and economic growth, but let's be honest, these promises are hollow. A data center is not a factory that homes workers. It is a concrete fortress that works with a skeleton crew, less than it takes to run the administrative offices in Chatham. Fewer than that, it would, the jobs they would bring are highly specialized and likely not to employ our residents. not to employ our residents. The costs, meanwhile, are borne by us, our families, our farms, our future. These massive facilities, as you heard, consume vast amounts of electricity and water, straining our resources that we depend on to sustain our families and our livelihoods. A single data center will guzzle millions of gallons of water annually from cooling, leaving our wells dry, our fields parched. We already have water problems in this area as it is. What plans are there in place to mitigate this? Many regions are currently expanding data center footprints while ignoring these potential water risks. This trend has already resulted in increased water scarcity in several regions, and it poses a threat to society, political, and ecological risks. Let's not make this fatal mistake in this county. Ask yourselves, are we willing to trade our agricultural heritage and our children's future for a warehouse of blinking lights? Once this technology is obsolete, data centers will leave a deserted, concrete desert for future generations to clean up. Let's not forget the environmental toll. These centers are energy gluttons powered by fossil fuels instead of green energy. They generate heat, noise, and light pollution, transforming our serene landscapes into industrial wastelands, leaving a hellish background track that blares into our peaceful lives. As a healthcare professional, I know that the sound and light pollution is more than just a mere annoyance. The acute and chronic effects are well documented, not just to humans, but to livestock. And we, as horse lovers and equine owners, we're very concerned about that in our community. While humans experience hypertension, increased cortisol levels, insomnia, and anxiety, it can't be stopped. No one can stop it because it does not sleep. As you heard from the gentleman a while ago, the dustful noises are incessant. The wildlife that shares our rural haven will be displaced. The silence we treasure will be shattered. The dark, starlit skies that we take marvel in will be dimmed forever. We live here because we value peace, beauty, and harmony of rural life, but data centers are not designed for harmony. They're monuments to urban sprawl, greed, misplaced in the heart of a rural countryside at a tremendous sacrifice. Beyond the environmental and economic costs, there's something even more precious at stake. It's their sense of community and identity. Rural neighborhoods aren't just land masses. They are living, breathing stories of families, traditions, cultures, and resilience. Data centers are impersonal corporate intrusions that care nothing for our history and values. They bring outsiders who see our land as a commodity, a way to make a quick buck, and not a home. We must ask ourselves, who benefits from these data centers? It's not us. It's not our neighbors. It is a multinational group of corporations harvesting profits while leaving us with the carcass of their so-called progress. We're left to clean up their mess when the land is degraded, the water is gone, and the tax incentives expire. Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot stand idly by. We must raise our voices and demand that our rural neighborhoods be protected from this reckless expansion called Ballico. We call on you, Commissioners, to prioritize local needs over corporate greed. Together, we have the power to shape the future of our communities. We can say no to data centers and yes to sustainable development that respects our land, our water, and our way of life. Together, we can preserve the beauty, tranquility, and vitality of our rural heartlands for generations to come. Let us rise to this challenge with determination, with unity, and with love for all the places we call home. May God bless you and guide you as you make this life-altering decision. Thank you.
Teri Overby Stafford.
Hi, I'm Teri Stafford, and I hope you can hear me in the back. I haven't heard a lot of things tonight. I'm not here to play on your emotions about how my family has six generations plus in this county. And I'm not here to tell you redundant facts on how you build a power plant, how you build this, how you do that, how you get the water 20 miles away. That's not what I'm here to tell you. You've heard it, and you're going to keep hearing it, and I really appreciate you staying and listening to me. What I'm going to tell you is, we don't have a solution yet. Your answer tonight, if it's not no, I'm going to go home and think 300 times over, what were those people thinking? What I'm going to tell you is, you don't have the solution tonight. There are too many people behind me. Whether you'll ever get a solution for this county, for this project, I don't know. I don't know the facts well enough to tell you. My family's spoken to you tonight. One of my first-grade students that I taught has talked to you tonight. They have the facts, some of them, but I don't know how many of us have them. But your job could not possibly be complete for this many people to sit here at 10 o'clock at night, and for you to be here at 10 o'clock, which I appreciate you listening to me. Now, I know you know this one. This is an old Pennsylvania County saying. Think about it and have a good laugh. This dog don't hunt.
Jessie Craver. Thank you for letting me speak. So do not let the scrubs fool you. I delivered baby goats last week. So I moved to Chatham four years ago, for multiple reasons, but our biggest one is, I have five children, and four of them have asthma. And my six-year-old, for whatever reason, has to still see a pulmonologist. It took us a year of living here in this fresh air for him, with constant steroids, to breathe normal, to not struggle. Because we lived in a town, right? And it was cute and quaint, and it was perfect for us, but those towns don't grow. Chatham's not going to get bigger. They just kept putting crap in it. They just kept putting stuff in it, so it wasn't a community anymore, it wasn't a home anymore. People weren't waving to you. People weren't bringing me salsa because they let me know that my pigs were out at 4:00 a.m. in the morning. They don't have that when you keep filling it in. So my son, Ballico's not paying $250 a month on an inhaler. What happens when all that stuff is in the air for our children? I moved here so my kids have a healthy life. Never mind that, me and Brianna just started the Pennsylvania County Clover Buds for the 4-H. We're sitting here trying to teach our community and our little kids what we're about, what this community is about, what this land is about, what the four generations that lived in my home before me did. So when I go to the January meeting, and if you voted yes for this, what do I tell those five through eight-year-olds, what they're in their dreams are to be farmers, and they're just not giving any land for them when they get there? So if you don't do it, you don't vote because of the noise or the wildlife, do it for our kids, because some of us grew up here, and some of us came here for a purpose and a reason, and not just my kids matter, but every kid's in this county matter. So please, think about that. Thank you.
James Gray.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Gray, and I am a recently, I've recently moved to the Chatham District. In fact, the ink on my driver's license is still wet, on my paper driver's license. I spent the last 25 years in Daytona Beach, Florida. My wife and I live there. We decided to move here, we had some family who moved here, and I want to tell you a couple of things. Number one, I think the biggest reason why we moved here is every single person in this room, every, the way, who they are and the way they are. You've had people come up here, lived there their entire lives, doctors and engineers, and I think that's amazing. And I've come here, and every single person you see wants to wave to you, wants to say hi to you, wants to this. I had something prepared. I don't know that it applies after all this stuff I've heard. What I want to tell you, since I've been here, is, you know, the guy from Ballico, I'm a semi-truck driver, I'm a flatbed semi-truck driver. I've delivered construction materials and freight to data centers, solar panel, fields, wind turbine plants. They destroy everything, everything they do to the ground and the groundwater and the surface and the air and the trees. They have no respect for any of it. They take nothing into account. They just come in and they level everything. I've seen it, driven dozens and dozens and dozens of loads to these places. So I can't speak on a lot of the things that some of these people spoke on, but I can speak on the impact of this driving study that they now, that I don't have to do now. I think it's kind of ironic that they've made it small enough that they don't have to do a lot of the things that they thought they were going to have to do in the beginning, and they got so much pushback from everybody in this room and everybody in this county that they went back and they figured out, how can we scale this down to make a Plan A, you know, step one, and so that way they can get their foot in the door. So as I sat back there in my seat, I noticed a couple of things. You, sir, I don't know your name is?
My name is Brent Sheldon.
Mr. Sheldon, thank you. You're the only one who really asked questions, with all due respect to any of you. You asked some really good questions. There probably should have been about 25 times more questions than you asked, and if you notice, every question that got asked, they just sort of gray-aryated. They gray-aryed the answers. So I know the impact, I've seen the impact of these things, okay? You're talking about, you know how many trucks it takes to build one of these plants, to build something like that? You're talking about two two-lane roads that they're going to drive these 80,000-pound, 80-foot-long semi-trucks on. It takes hundreds of trucks a day, hundreds of trucks a week, cement trucks, dump trucks, semi-trucks. That road, I don't know, it's not this 57, but the other one. It's a little two-lane road. There's no way that what they're telling you can be, can be done right. There's no way it can be done with the way they're saying it. The water can't be done the way they're saying it. The wastewater can't be, how are you going to, how are you going to, how are you going to treat 2 million gallons of wastewater with no plan?
Patrick O'Brien is the next on the list, but I'm just verifying that he does wish to be removed. Okay. Ella Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Ella Robertson, and I live at 325 Neighborhood Road, Chatham. My road, Mill Creek Road, and Mill Creek Road and Jackson Lane are adjacent, and my property is also adjacent to Mottley's Dairy Farm. I live in the Bannister River District. I stand before you tonight, asking you to vote no to power plants and data centers in rural neighborhoods. We already have Mountain Valley Pipeline at our back door, Transco Pipeline is not far from where we live, and during the summer, cow manure is hauled throughout our neighborhood on a daily basis, and the stench is overwhelming. I ask that you take into consideration that we have two churches in our neighborhood and a cemetery. There are also children, people on dialysis, people taking cancer treatment, and individuals who have breathing problems and have to sleep with CPAP machines at night. Some years ago, they decided to put a ramp leading out of Chatham, exiting onto 29 Bypass towards Breton. My grandmother, Catherine Saunders, who was 86 years old, was told she had to move. Move where, she asked. They didn't care because they had one thing on their agenda, and that was to build a ramp. Needless to say, my grandmother worried about this so much that she suffered congestive heart failure and died before the year ended. People need to realize what devastation one can cause when they actually turn people's lives upside down. What's more important, money or one's well-being? Put yourself in our place and ask if you would want these power plants in your neighborhood where your children and grandchildren are growing up or have to live. Stop trying to fix what's not even broken. Thank you.
Jenny East Cole.
Ms. Cole, if you could, if you could address this board.
Yeah, I can do it. I'll stand back here. Does that work?
I can't see your display.
Oh, well, I think they're going to put it, no? You do what?
Turn it around.
Okay. I thought we had that squared in. Like that? Now you guys can't.
Mrs. Cole.
Okay. There's a little bit of a, this communication.
Excuse me. Ma'am. Hang on one second. I'll restart your time, okay? You're here tonight to address this board, okay? Not the audience.
Yes, sir.
All right?
I talked with the AV guy back here, and he had it where he projected it up on there. That was the confusion.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
Start your time now.
Okay, so this is a little bit, it's not going to work as well, because you guys can't see the map. All right. Wow. Okay, well, a lot of this has already been said. The one thing I did want to also note, too, there's a few things that I could throw in, is he was talking about they're going to take the transportation, they're going to haul in stuff from 57 and up Transco. And that just doesn't make sense, because if you're over here in the western side of the data centers, how are you going to get there from way over on Transco? You've got to cross Chalk Level, then you've got to go where? To get down to the, to the western side, to those data centers down there. What's going to happen is they're going to bring it in through Neighborhood Road, off of 29. Okay, I know the guy said he wasn't going to, but he is, all right? It just makes a lot of sense, and this is really frustrating because I can't show these people this map, but I can show you guys. Here's 29, and here's the on-and-off ramp for Business 29, Main Street, and here's also this other on-and-off ramp, which is Hurt Road, okay? These both go directly into Chatham. This one runs right into Hargrave. This section goes over by Chatham Elementary. It's not that far from this data center, okay? This Neighborhood Road feeds, on the map, it is labeled a V-dot entrance, okay? Right up here at this point. This portion of the road was not even on the map. That is Jackson Lane and Neighborhood Road. It was not even on. I drew that in, okay? They left that completely off. Was that an oversight or what? I don't know, but if they're not even putting on major roads, what else are they doing wrong? Okay? The other thing I wanted to talk about is Cherrystone- The other thing I wanted to talk about is Cherrystone Creek, Little Cherrystone Creek. Uh, it goes, flows, uh, through the property, through the western property and it's 3,100 feet along this. It's going to end up being a sterile ditch is what it'll be because it's going to encounter, uh, not only just the pipeline, but the interconnections to the pipeline, it's going to, uh, there's gated, gated buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want this.
Jeff Love.
Good evening. Jeff Love, Stanton River District. Erfan K. Ali, Balico CEO, is the only person that would benefit from this project. He is a developer looking for cheap land, naive county leadership and naive residents. He is not an employer. Based on Mr. Ali's comments during the December meeting in Hurt, it was apparent that he knows very little about data centers or is intentionally hiding that information. Data centers are rack-bound computer facilities that require minimal human interaction, meaning very few jobs. I've had a website business since 1998 and my server is located in a data center in California. I've never seen the data center and I have no need to go there. As such, I know that the data centers function predominantly through remote access and it's also important to realize that data center users do not need to pay taxes. The website you can go to is the Virginia.gov website, tax.virginia.gov/communications/taxes. The users are not paying taxes to the county or the state. I don't live in chalk level. However, that's not the only area that will be negatively impacted by the data center. Mr. Ali wants to steal millions of gallons of water from the Stanton River daily. He won't reduce water use if there is a drought like the one we had this past summer. Water is a finite resource and upstream and downstream water will be negatively impacted to meet demand, including Smith Mountain Lake, Leesville Lake and Stanton River. Area groundwater and the environment will become contaminated once water runs through the data center cooling system, especially if there's a coolant leak. Since the electric, existing electric grid cannot handle the needs of the data center, it would be exclusively powered by natural gas generators. These massive generators will be running 24/7, creating noise and pollution in our beautiful rural community. The bottom line is that neither Pennsylvania County nor our residents will benefit from this project. Balico, you are not welcome here. Thank you.
Tracy Love.
Good evening. You'll have to excuse me if I stutter a little bit, it's past my bedtime. Um, I attended the information meeting in Hurt because I wanted to learn more about this project and especially because of the use of our water. Mr. Ali, Balico CEO, offered what sounded like wonderful possibilities, possibilities. But he was not, but he was unable to back up any of those numbers he presented or answer many of the questions from our citizens that attended that meeting. When asked about his resume, he would not give any background, but suggested that we look him up in LinkedIn. Well, I did that. And now I have even more concerns about his inability to develop a beneficial project for our county. This is directly from his LinkedIn page. Pursuing innovative ideas to spur sustainable economic development in Pakistan with a focus on energy and food security by forming strategic partnerships. As managing partner of Tharpac LLC and serving as chairman of the Tharpac Consortium of Companies bringing leading-edge clean coal technologies to develop a large-scale energy complex in Pakistan based to leverage the giant Tharligate coal reserves, including synthetic natural gas and coal to liquids. The objective, bring energy independence to Pakistan. One of the, um, people on LinkedIn that recommends him is a Milton Catelid of London, England. August 5th, 2013, Milton worked with him, but they were at different companies. His most recent work has focused on activities to spur sustainable economic development in his native Pakistan. Notice the absence of projects in the United States. I don't want to see Pennsylvania County take a chance on this project and be his guinea pig for trying to expand his businesses in the United States. Our natural resources are too important to take risks with. Once our water is gone, it's gone. We've suffered from droughts. I personally had a well go dry this past year. If he's using our water to take care of his data centers, where's my water to drink? Where does my family go for water?
Three minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
David Perry.
Hi, David Perry from the Southern Virginia Land Conservancy again. Most of, of what I would have said tonight has already been said far better than I could say it by the people behind me in this room. Um, and I also want to thank you all for being here at, at this time. Our organization doesn't have a, a formal position on this project other than what I would say is, is a common sense position. I'll come back to that, but, um, like I said, most of what I would have said has already been said better than I could say it. I'll give you a few facts that I think will help fill in, um, some of the questions that have been answered tonight. Um, the gas turbine, uh, generation plant was, is proposed for 3,500 megawatts. Um, how big is that? Uh, Smith Mountain Lake is 600 megawatts. That's one-sixth the size. Lake Anna Nuclear Power Plant, 1,800 megawatts, one-half the size for what's proposed in Pennsylvania County. We've heard tonight from one gentleman that there's no agriculture in Pennsylvania County. I beg to differ. Pennsylvania County is the number nine state, or, sorry, county in the entire state of Virginia in terms of the value of agricultural goods produced, ninth in the entire state out of 95 counties at $100 million a year. Agriculture is the number one private industry in Virginia. It's going away. Between 2017 and 2022, we lost more five land, uh, farmland in that five years than we did in the previous 15 years. Nearly a half million acres of land were taken out of agriculture and converted to some other use. Meanwhile, 10% of Virginia's farms stopped operating altogether. Talked about water. I'll give you an interesting statistic. University of California just did a study. One 100-word email composed by ChatGTP uses the equivalent of a 16-ounce bottle of water. Data centers are ravenous consumers of water. I found a fact that I thought was pretty interesting, but it's kind of been, uh, uh, made less significant by what I've heard tonight. In one Oregon city, Google data, Google data centers consumed 274 million gallons of water in one year. That was 25% of the, uh, this one city's entire municipal water consumption, their consumption. And I believe, uh, and I may be wrong, but I believe the 700,000 gallons a day that would be taken from Chatham's water supply is about 50% of their capacity, not their consumption, but their entire capacity. And if you want to hear a ruckus, just wait until a farmer can't water his livestock or can't irrigate his crops, or her crops because the water table is too low and the streams are too low during a time of drought like we have in the summers. Friends, I make decisions every day. I run a nonprofit company.
Three minutes is complete.
I went back, I, I mentioned a common sense position. Here's common sense. I don't think you have the information you need to make a decision about this project. Thank you.
All right. We're, we're going to take a, a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 10:45.
We're gonna take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 10:45. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please return to your seats. Like to call us back into order, the time is 10:46. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if you will, thank you. Mrs. Rags there?
The next speaker is Amy Walker.
I'm Amy Walker, and I live in Gretna. When I was growing up, my mother used to say, "Amy, when you have a decision to make, I want you to think very carefully. I want you to look at all the possibilities, but most importantly, I want you to work, look at that worst-case scenario. And if you can live with it, you go ahead, but if you can't, you say no and you move on." You know, one of the biggest decisions we make in our life is where we're gonna live. And we take great care to find that home that will provide the best quality of life for our family. But you know, part of that process is looking, is there any negatives? Are there any worst-case scenarios? Well, nobody in this county has ever had to face the worst-case scenario of living nearby or in the middle of a Loud Data Center campus, complete with a natural gas power plant. Yet here we are, in Balaco, all their message is bright and shiny, it glitters with jobs and tax revenue. But there's a quote that says, "When something glitters, you have to look underneath." And when you look underneath, you see destruction of communities, of farmland, of roads, of wildlife, of the environment, and of that quality of life we all seek. But there's something else that would happen, and it would be looming, and it would be the word threat. Because if you approve this, you're setting a precedent that tells data center developers that, hey, anywhere and everywhere in Pennsylvania County is available, irrespective of our communities and our homes, as Balaco has shown us. Just look at Prince William, Fairfax, and Loudon Counties. Data centers have exploded with unplanned industrial sprawl, devouring land and communities like a cancer. We have the opportunity to learn from their gross mistakes and not repeat them. So you need to look beyond the glitter. You need to look underneath and look at the consequences for Chalk Level, for Whittles, for Mill Creek, and for Sheva, and honestly, for the remainder of the communities in Pennsylvania County. You know, we, the people, live in these counties. And when you make your vote, you need to be thinking about us, the people. And who are we? We're moms, we're dads, we're grandmothers, we're great-grandparents. We're married, we're single, we're widows, we're widowers, we're veterans, we're farmers, we're retirees, we're people who telecommute, we're stay-at-home mothers, we're people who drive to work every day, we're people who grew up here, we're people who grew up here, moved away, and came back, and we're people like me who related.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Do we sound familiar? We should, because we're people just like you. And just like you, we sought to have the best quality of life, and just like you, we never imagined living in the midst of a Loud Data Center campus. So you have a decision to make. And to quote my mother, you need to think carefully. And you need to consider all the possibilities, but most importantly, you need to think about that worst-case scenario. And if you yourself would not have a home, live in a home or a community that's near a Loud Data Center campus, how in the world can you vote to do it to us?
Three minutes is complete.
We, the people, say no. And we, the people, we are just like you. Thank you.
Katie Whitehead.
Katie Whitehead, Chatham Blair's District. The decision before you does not have to be difficult. You have a comprehensive plan and a future zoning map. The Balaco Phase 1 parcels proposed for heavy industry appear to me, on the future zoning map, to be agricultural and residential. Certainly, the parcel where the power plant is proposed. You have a recommendation from community development staff. Now we hear that proffers were submitted. Staff hasn't had a chance to evaluate them. You have not had a chance to read them. Neither have I, like almost everyone in this packed room. The Board of Supervisors received some information about Balaco during the past year in closed sessions. You have not. After Balaco's two community meetings in October, the Board of Supervisors asked economic development staff to tell the developer that he did not have the necessary votes. To my knowledge, the board did not invite Balaco to reapply for Phase 1 of the project. Balaco is proposing a huge project. Phase 1 alone is huge. It still includes the largest gas-burning power plant in the United States. We are not prepared to fully anticipate and evaluate the consequences. In its community meetings, Balaco representatives could say anything. There was no fact-checking or information confirmed by the county. And there is no way to hold Balaco accountable for the promises made in those public meetings or in the unsolicited PR text messages sent to drum up support. I strongly encourage you and the audience to watch Economic Development Director Matt Rose's November 19th presentation. What struck me was Matt's confidence in our current situation in the county. He certainly didn't promote this project or use of the site. Pennsylvania County is no longer desperate as it was when he came, or seemed to be 10 years ago. It's highly attractive to industry and manufacturing. Maybe beggars can't be too z. We are not beggars. Please have the confidence in our county to say no. Thank you.
Mike Ferret.
Good evening, and I thank all of you for staying late and listening to all of us. I greatly appreciate it, and I know everyone else does. I had a whole bunch of stuff to say, but everybody said it, so I'm not gonna repeat it. I just wanna kinda drill down on one thing. I'm a transplant. I moved down here in 2021. I spent 50 years in Northern Virginia. I lived in Fairfax County. I know Loudon County. I know Prince William County. I can personally testify to you, that noise you heard, that jet engine sound, that's real. That's what you get. You drive by on the highway and you hear it. You don't even have to be that close to it. And that's in areas that are, have much more ground noise, much more other things going on than down here. The one thing, the reason I came down here was because of how peaceful it is and how quiet it is. You go outside and you hear nothing, nothing at all. Most of the time, I'm the only thing making noise. I'm riding around on my lawnmower or my tractor. And when I shut it off, I hear nothing. If you let these plants get built, that noise is gonna carry for miles. It's not just gonna affect the people immediately around the plant, it's gonna affect people for miles. And that noise, the one thing that no one talked about during the presentation, the noise, it's 24/7, 365. Would any of you wanna live next to that or near that? Because I know we don't. No one wants to live next to it. I moved down here after 50 years in Northern Virginia, and I took my, the product of my earnings, my life wealth, and found my forever home. And now what I'm looking at potentially happening is if this plan goes through, I won't have something to give to my kids. No one's gonna wanna buy it. I'm gonna have, if I wanna move, because I can't take it, I'm gonna lose everything. I'm gonna have to sell for pennies on the dollar. And that's gonna happen to a lot of people. This is, this is gonna have impact beyond what we can possibly understand. And so I've asked you respectfully, please, think about whether you, if you were in our situations, would vote for this. And if the answer's no, then the vote is no. Thank you for your time.
Cassandra Smith.
I appreciate the council letting us all have our speak and give us your time. We're all here late, and we all understand that. It just shows how dedicated we are of expressing our hearts. My name is Cassandra Smith. I live on Strider Road, right off of Mill Creek in the Bannister District. I literally live right there. I'm gonna see it. I work in technology, and I understand that everything has its place. And as a person who works in technology, it moves faster than the speed of light. I haven't seen it changed this fast in a really long time. The cutting-edge, what seems cutting-edge now can be obsolete in six months. We have no way of knowing that. Rural counties built industrial parks to be forward-thinking, but now they seem to go ignored for more money. My property would be greatly affected by this project, to be honest. If I had known something like this was on the docket, if I had had, you know, the crystal ball, I 100% would not have moved here. I have lived in Virginia all my left, I've lived all the way around Virginia, I've lived everywhere. Richmond, Northern Virginia, the beach, the mountains, I've lived everywhere, and we decided to move here. I can only imagine the non-influx of potential inhabitants or the outflux of current residents, which is also tax income. The idyllic picture you were shown earlier was missing a very key element, an 18-story power plant. That is the equivalent of the height of the new casino in Danville, 18 stories. So your 100-foot setback is not gonna hide that. And 100 feet, for those who were asking earlier, is 33 yards. And anybody who's familiar with football knows that 120 yards is a football field, which is 360 feet. This building, an 18-story building, can potentially be seen 15-plus miles away. If you live in Chatham, you're gonna see it. You may be even, possibly even Gretna, I'm not 100% sure, but you're gonna see it. It's 18 stories. Let's talk more numbers for clarity. You asked earlier, Mr. Shelton, about water. The EPA says the average family of four uses around 10,000 gallons per month. The town of Chatham has approximately 1,200 people, which equals about 12 million gallons per year. 12 million gallons per year, average. Balaco's alone, based on their minimum, would use 255 million gallons a year. The water comes from under, comes from the river and under the ground, so how does that affect those in the county with wells? It's the same aquifer. The U.S. Drought Monitor says that in 2023, 56% of Virginia was in an extreme drought, a state we move in and out of, causing wells to be drilled deeper. Per The Washington Post, other communities that have said no to projects like this, Fort Worth, Texas, Peculiar, Montana, Chesterton, Indiana, Fayette County, Georgia.
Three minutes is complete.
We are not a minority.
Ten seconds.
Please vote no. Thank you.
Amanda Sinkwadner, and she is speaking on behalf of Friends of Whittle and the Concerned Citizens of Chalk Level.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Sinkwadner. I vote in the Gretna-Callens District, and tonight I represent two groups, Concerned Citizens Chalk Level and the Friends of Whittles. Let's wake up Pennsylvania County, we've all gotten tired, but tonight we're gonna take a journey down the Yellow Brick Road, and we're gonna discover some brains and some heart and some courage as it pertains to the Balaco rezoning request that we're considering tonight. First, let's start with brains, and let's make sure we have some as we evaluate what's in front of us. I'm gonna take a slightly different slant to what some of the other folks have shared tonight, but first, I wanna make sure we're very clear. We are voting tonight on the same project that was printed in the Star Tribune on October 16th. The only difference is, is this is called an entry phase, and to deny that is simply denying the truth. But moreover, this area is protected by current zoning ordinances. This area is protected by agricultural and residentially-zoned areas that are also included in the comprehensive plan that we currently honor. And the one statement that no one ever likes me to hear or to say out loud is that people have willfully, willfully, willfully invested in these areas. They have built homes, they have purchased homes, they have purchased land because of the protection that our zoning creates for ag zoning and for residentially-zoned areas. We cannot ignore that, and Planning Commission, if we do ignore it tonight, then I'm afraid to say that zoning altogether is completely irrelevant. Speaking of brains, I wanna talk a little bit about something that really got to mind: nefarious text messaging. When we all receive those text messages from Balaco, I wondered, what exactly are we signing the petition for? There's nothing about a rezoning request. That's what we're doing tonight. That's what we're doing on February 18th. We're not talking about a community college campus. We're not talking about expected outcomes on a project that's been approved. We are talking about re-zoning land. But you know, the one thing that really got to me were the pictures. Oh, let's examine them now. It was the lady on her knees, looking up at her daughter. She had perfect curls, she had a starch-white blouse, her little girl had braids, wearing a navy dress, going away, I'm sure, to day school. The second picture had parents sitting on an ideal Pottery Barn couch with two children, probably doing their homework. It looked like a 2024 Leave It to Beaver. But you know, one of the things I noticed most is that they didn't know who we were, because they don't care. They would've been better off to have had those pictures with a Carhartt sweatshirt, dirty Ariat jeans, and some cowboy boots. They would've been better off to have had a Nike sweatshirt and a kid wearing a pair of Melos carrying a basketball. They would've been better off to have had a mom taking a science project into the third grade classroom and wearing scrubs, because she was on the way to her job as a local dental hygienist. And you know what they would've been better off to have assumed? Is that everyone in this county does not look like that. They could've at least honored our diversity in Pennsylvania County, but they chose not to. And now, if the public relations team hears my words tonight, and they change those pictures, we'll know just how disingenuous they truly are. Speaking of those text messages, it references Mecklenburg County an awful lot, so I wanna talk about Mecklenburg County for just a few minutes. Number one, all of the data centers in Mecklenburg County are located in industrial sites, industrial parks, not in agriculturally-zoned and residentially-zoned lands. When we talk about schools, I heard one of the government officials allude that, hey, 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 we can have schools with fountains in front of them. Well, let's talk about that school with the fountain in front of them. That high school, that middle school that's two and three stories tall, with that fountain in front of them? It's accredited with a condition. You know what that condition is? Chronic absenteeism. Over 30% of their students are absent over 10% of the time. So you see, all things can't be solved with a selling pitch for new schools with fountains in front of them. Other things that I discovered is that Mecklenburg County has more teachers on provisional licenses. Mecklenburg County only pays $3,000 more for an entry-level salary for a teacher. I found out that data center technicians in Mecklenburg County make $16 to $22 an hour when they bring two years of experience to the table. But the best thing I learned from Mecklenburg County was exactly what their administrator shared on the WSET broadcast. He advised local leaders in Pennsylvania to avoid placing data centers near residential areas or rural farmland. He noted that industrial sites close to major highways are more suitable for such projects. We have found that if you put them closer to major highways, it's better, because the secondary roads cannot withstand the truck traffic that is going to the site. secondary roads cannot withstand the truck traffic that is going to the site. Other than brains, in order to make this decision tonight, you've got to have a heart. And I can tell you what we've discovered through the last three months is we have a very good-hearted group of people in this county. Now, we do have a few that are willing to eat their own, but moreover, we've learned that there are a lot of really good people who are willing to defend their neighbors and willing to stand up for what's right. But when I think about heart tonight, and I think about all of you, you know what I think about? This idea of proffers. What, what could you possibly bring to the table tonight? To look at this group of people, those who have gone, those who are here, those who are watching? What kind of proffer would you bring to us that would erase the black eye that we have on our county? What kind of proffer could an attorney put forward to all of you to consider to tell me that my children don't matter? And the work my parents put into their property don't matter? And all of those residences in Robbins Court and on Jackson Lane and on Neighborhood Road, they don't matter either? What kind of proffer could you possibly accept in your heart that would make sense for this project to come forward? Last, but certainly not least, it's going to take some courage to get the right thing done tonight. It's going to take some courageous leadership. Because you're going to have to look at 17 landowners and an outside developer and you're going to have to say, hey, I know this was going to make you rich quick or wealthier than you were, but see, we've got this whole thing over here. This whole community of people that have been protected by zoning for agriculturally and residentially zoned areas. We've got this whole group of people over here, and their lives matter, and their property rights matter, and their homeowners' rights matter, and the future of their families matter just as much as yours. You know, I'm willing to beg. I'm willing to beg. I am willing to beg on my knees tonight for mercy, and so are all of the other people here, that this wouldn't happen. I can get on my knees if it would make a difference. It'd be a great picture for the front page of the Danville Register because I'm willing to beg you for mercy. I'm willing to beg the board as well. We don't want our communities devastated. We don't want the lives of our families and the future of our children to be reshaped forever because of a developer who has come to town with a lot of money in his sleeve. We're willing to beg, but I don't think we're going to have to because I think you're willing to do the right thing. And you know why? Because I know that you love your families, and I know that you love your homes. And I know when you go home tonight, you're going to want to look in the mirror, and you're going to want to be able to appreciate the person who's staring back at you. I know you love your home because it's your sanctuary, it's our place of rest, it's our place of memories, but it's also a place of the future. But also know that you feel the same way we do. There's just no place like home. There's no place like home. There's no place like home. There's no place like home. And ladies and gentlemen in Pennsylvania County, if you want our Planning Commission tonight to say no to Balico because you know there's no place like home, please stand in solidarity with me now. There's no place like home. 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 If you think about the things you've heard tonight, and you hear the passion in our voices to know that this community's been threatened, and the only thing we want is peace, and the only thing we want is to live our lives, to do the right thing by our neighbors, and what we want you to do tonight to protect all of us is to say no to Balico. Say no to Balico. Thank you and God bless.
John, but I'm sorry, I cannot make out the last name. It's the last one on the list. John was the first name.
State your name when you come forward, please.
I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, but there are two things I'd like to address.
Ma'am, before you get started, could you, could you tell us your name?
My name is Linda Owen, and I live on Transco Road. A friend of mine came over and pulled the plat up for the Balico project, and he had software on his laptop that overlapped that. And the power plant is 1,300, approximately 1,347 feet from my mailbox. I dare say that any one of you sitting up here or anyone behind me would want to live to a power plant that close because of the noise, because of the lights, and other issues. Also, the other issue I wanted to address was the traffic on Transco Road. My husband worked for Transco Power Plant for 36 years before he died. I have no problem living that close to the pipeline or the plant. Transco and Mountain Valley, for the last two to three years, have made additions to the plants and facilities there. I sat on my front porch in the afternoon and watched the traffic go up and down that road, 18-wheel trucks on Transco Road, a number of them, back and forth hauling equipment and supplies in and out on a daily basis. And at 5:00, when the work crew got off, you better stay out of the way. So my question is this. A project, I'm not against progress. A project of this size does need to be in an industrial park such as Berry Hill. I go through that area about twice a year, and there's nothing down there. The county paid money for that land, ran water line down there, and I don't see why a project of this nature couldn't be relocated to a site similar to that. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be very brief. Just a few thoughts for the board. The, one thing that I want to reiterate is that Pennsylvania County controls its destiny. Anyone who has traveled to Northern Virginia, I think, would tell you that Pennsylvania County does not run the risk of turning into Loudon or Prince William based on this rezoning request for just under 750 acres. We're talking about 750 acres roughly, no more, no less. As Matt Rowe mentioned to the IDA, if data center is going to happen in Pennsylvania County, this is the site. And again, Pennsylvania County controls its destiny. A support for this project does not commit the county to anything beyond this project. I also want to make the point that supporting this rezoning request does not in any way mean that Pennsylvania County is turning its back on agriculture. In Ms. Ragsdale's report, you saw that, yes, some of the acreage is actively used for agriculture, much of the land is vacant. I've sat in meetings of this body before, and I saw it again tonight. You've approved rezoning requests taking land from another designation to agricultural. It is a false choice that supporting a rezoning like this means that you're turning your back on the agricultural character, the agricultural history of Pennsylvania County. It's simply not the case. As we mentioned earlier, 40%, 40% of the acreage that's included in this site plan is maintained as open space, at least 40%. Much of the argument that you have heard from many folks pertains to open space. It's the view shed. It is the character of the land. I understand, I acknowledge, I respect their opinions, but this project preserves a significant amount of open space. Again, those two things can be true. The land serves this, this industrial purpose after being rezoned, but there is still a significant amount of open space that is maintained. I'm also very proud of the proffers that our team has drafted in collaboration with county staff. It is something that many hours have been spent on. They spell out in great detail, 11 pages, single-spaced, exactly what Balico is committing to do here, what Balico is saying it will do to go above and beyond what is required under the zoning ordinance, the current zoning ordinance. There was a comment earlier about no compromise. Proffers are compromised. The proffers that have been developed with county staff represent compromise by Balico, represent a, an incredibly good faith effort, I would submit to you. They include things like a requirement that only public water and no groundwater be used for this project. They include specific requirements for buffering, for screening, for protection of existing creeks like Little Cherrystone, requiring that certain steps be taken to prevent erosion to make sure that appropriate internal buffers within the project exist. The proffers lay out specifically the commitments by Balico toward first responders, toward creating infrastructure for the county that would be turned over to the county, at no cost to the county, once it's completed. The buffer, or sorry, the proffers also talk about the issue of noise, making it clear that the existing noise ordinances apply to Balico, and there is language in the proffers where Balico says if it is commercially reasonable for them to, to go lower, they'll do it. Balico is not looking to disrupt people's lives with noise. If they're, they're going to comply with a noise ordinance, if it is possible and reasonable to go below, they're going to do it. At this point, we are in a situation where the, the proffers have not been fully reviewed by staff. Proffers have not had an opportunity to be fully reviewed by you all. If you all are not inclined this evening to, to advance this proposal with your recommendation, we would ask that you defer action for another month so that we would be able to... We would ask that you defer action for another month to allow for full review of the proffers, both by you and by staff. Right now, the recommendation in front of you does not have the benefit of full review of these final proffers. I know you have committed staff, you have diligent staff. Their analysis, their recommendations carry a lot of weight with you, and right now, we don't have a recommendation that is able to take into account all of that information. And I would suggest to you all, and this is my, my last comment, there is no harm in receiving more information, there is no harm in additional consideration, and whether it is having a chance to review the proffers, having an opportunity for Balico to provide additional information regarding utilities, regarding the infrastructure questions that several of you have raised tonight. We would ask for that opportunity to do so, so that this project can be given its due with all of the information on the table, and thank you all so much for your time tonight.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I've, I've got one. A couple of things have, have come up tonight about your power plant and the fact that it seems to be the same size as it was before for a much scaled-back version. What is the reasoning behind still doing as large a power plant?
Sure. I, I would say several reasons. One is the 300 megawatts is an important first step. It allows the project to get off the ground. While also giving time for the appropriate permitting for the larger power station. 300 megawatts is not sufficient for even the 12 data centers that are anticipated here. So we need to go beyond the 300 megawatts to serve the 12 that are anticipated. If there is further growth of the footprint here, that 3,500 would be able to serve that, but it is, so I'd say it is a function of those two things, knowing that 300 gets us off the ground, but it's not sufficient, and also planning for potential capacity if the county were to expand the footprint of the project.
Right. And that would be, it's a county, but you were, you just indicated to us.
Hang on one second, Mr. Webb, and Mr. Gold. Folks, it's late, and if we could, the mumbling and the murmuring, everyone's been respectful up to this point for the most part. It's important that we hear him as well, okay? So we're just trying to, to get a good understanding here, all right? So can we do that for about another, however long it takes? All right? Thank you. All right, Mr. Webb?
Again, you, you mentioned earlier that we're just talking about the 750 acres and that's it. So if, if that's really it, then the power plant, you're saying you're going to build it out as if you were still at the 2,200 acres, just in case you go to that level in the future? But yet you're really selling it tonight that it's only a 750-acre project. So, and I, I think therein lies, again, where you've got a lot of the community in the uproar, thinking that, that ones that may not feel affected now will in the future.
Mr. Webb, I would...
You kind of see where I'm, where I'm going?
Absolutely. No, I appreciate your question. The two points that I would make. One is that neither the, the rezoning itself nor the proffer speaks to the, the generation capacity of the power station. So 3,500 is what the plan is now, but the zoning is for a power station, whether it is 1 megawatt or, or 3,500. The, also, if it is not, because there is, there would not be anything locking Balico into the 3,500, if it did not make sense for Balico to do that, I am confident Balico would not want to spend money that it doesn't feel like it is going to, to recoup. So 3,500 is planning for a potential eventuality. It is not set in stone, and it certainly, again, with the rezoning, it is for a power station, not a power station of any specific size.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Gold, I can appreciate the position that you're in tonight as a lawyer myself. I am in receipt of a letter from your office to Emily Ragsdale that was dated November 19th. Is that accurate?
Without seeing it, Mr. Shelton?
Sure, sure. I, I mean, around November, you sent a letter asking to rezone the parcel to 760 acres in the Bannister District. Is that...
That strikes me as the general timeframe when this application was submitted.
So, so, and I'm really not trying to get curt with you, but why are we just receiving the proffers a day or two before if we've had since November? I mean, you guys are the moving party in this petition, correct?
We are seeking the rezoning, that's correct.
And based on your late submission, you're asking us to, in lieu of denying, to give it another month, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that, as I mentioned, I believe staff would absolutely concur. These discussions began in earlier part of the fall. The county has seen turnover with its county attorney. We have had the project take a different shape. We have had multiple holidays. We have, as is the case with many negotiations, you make the most progress closer to the end. And what I would just offer to you all is there is no harm in giving this full consideration with all of the contents that are in the proffers. They are, again, a good faith offer by Balico, and would hope that you all... They are, again, a good faith offer by Ballico, and would hope that you all and staff would have the opportunity to consider them fully before any recommendations are made. Thank you all.
I have, do you have a question? I have a question that doesn't really pertain to the proffers, but it's come up tonight, and that is the, back to the issue of water. It sounds like the town of Chatham is not offering any water for this project, so can you explain to me how we would get, you know, how this would even get off the ground without water?
Couple of comments. One, Mayor Davis's comment about not, the town not being directly contacted by members of the Ballico team. Believe Mr. Schenks spoke with town administration within the last week, so I would just respectfully disagree with my friend, the mayor.
Hold on, hold on a second. In the past week, like my colleague, Mr. Sheldon, mentioned, I mean, we're talking about November was the modified or the amended proposal. I was anxious to hear about the Hurt water piece as well, and that seems to be, at best, still in the hypothetical phase. So I'm just wondering what another month is going to provide you. If the town of, if the town of Chatham is not inclined to help you get started here, and the town of Hurt can't physically right now without a water line, what are we doing? Respectfully, I mean, what, what's the plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would say we are crossing Ts, dotting Is. The
Okay, all right.
There has been a significant amount of due diligence. There's a letter of intent from the town of Hurt. There is a communication from the town of Chatham from September to Matt Rowe discussing the capability, the capacity of the town of Chatham. As Mr. Schenks said, ideally, the water would, the initial water would come from the town of Chatham. If this project is approved, certainly, the hope is that the town of Chatham would wish to sell water to this project, generate the revenue that comes from that, have its infrastructure updated by Ballico at Ballico's cost. Same with the town of Hurt in terms of Ballico fronting that cost. You know, it is a, if the water is not available through the town of Chatham, that is a different, that is a greater expense upfront for Ballico, but it's not for me to say that Ballico would not incur that cost as a cost of doing business here. And the, again, the, I think, within a month's time, you would have the full staff review of the proffers. You would have the ability for the engineering team to provide additional information, including about communications and discussions with VDOT for the process that needs to be undertaken, whether there are any obstacles. But at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, without, without utilities, even if the, this rezoning were approved, without the utilities in place, the project's not going to go forward. And I understand that you may see it as a, you know, a chicken and egg situation, but what we know is that there is demand for projects like this right now, and it is, the onus is on Ballico as the applicant to make it happen.
Yeah.
And that there's cost involved in that, and
Believe me, I understand. I understand you, you know, zoning is step one, right? No one in their right mind's going to spend a bunch of money on a project until they know they can actually do it in getting the zoning right. I understand that. I also understand the town of Hurt situation. I know that they have, they've offered full support, full-throated support of the project for what it brings to the town of Hurt with their water situation. That, that, you know, that kind of got my attention. As a Stan River representative on this board, a lot of those folks in the town of Hurt are friends and family, and so I know they struggle with high water costs. But that was just a question I had about the initial startup, Chatham. I do feel like the, you know, having a conversation on the sixth with VDOT today being the seventh is a little bit late, even though you might disagree, but. Are there any other questions? All right.
If I may offer one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The, the conversation with VDOT was a response to information that we learned about potential restrictions for the limited access portions of the highway. So it was not as if the paths had not been explored before this, that really, and Mr. Schenks can correct me if I'm wrong, that was really, the impetus for that was being informed by VDOT of these potential restrictions and doing our due diligence to work through that. So, again, for a project of this magnitude with this many moving parts, we would ask that, again, if you're not favorably inclined tonight, that you allow another month for additional information to be synthesized, reviewed, so that the project is given its due before the Board of Supervisors hears it.
Okay. Did you have something, Mr. Schenks?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I did want to add that since September meeting, a letter from town of Chatham, since then, I've met in the office with town manager to go over the numbers and of this information here. Also have called him twice, had personal conversations, so it's not like we have not been in touch with Chatham.
Right, right. Yeah, I understand that you had been in touch. I appreciate you letting me know that.
Mr. Schenks, in your conversation, did the town, did the town manager agree to provide you the water necessary?
He said there's no agreement there, but there's interest there for us to, we could explore that opportunity. He did not say there was not a chance.
Okay. Ms. Henderson.
Yeah, I do have a quick question, and thank Mr. Webb for bringing it up. Just a very direct question, and I appreciate you all's time and interest in our area. In the proffers that we were given tonight, the thirty-five hundred megawatt, excuse me, number that we have in front of us, is that directly addressed in the proffers?
The, the production figure is not addressed in the proffers at this point. That had not been an item for discussion.
Okay.
What we had talked about were for power stations generally, whether it's three hundred megawatts, thirty-five hundred, what are the specific conditions that are appropriate and to which Ballico could agree to minimize, to minimize the effect on others, on neighboring landowners. So kind of irrespective of the amount of generation, if you're going to have a power station, what do you need to do? And so Ballico has said, and it's probably the longest section, individual section within the document, is the proffers specific to power station. And also, one other item on the utilities, and I don't have the answer to this question, but the ability of a public body to refuse to provide service to a customer, Mr. Sheldon's law firm, my law firm, we can say no, as long as we're not discriminating. Is a public body able to say, we're not going to give you water? That's a fair point to, whether, whether that is going to be controlling at the end of the day, I think is an important question.
Yeah, fair enough. Anything else? All right, thank you. Any comments, Ms. Ragsdale? All right. At eleven thirty-four, public hearing is closed. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R. twenty-five dash zero zero one, I'd like to make a motion that we move to deny, and I want to say something when I say that, this application. And the reason is because I feel there's been a lack of transparency, and as far as the proffers, we have not, I'm speaking for myself, I can't speak for the remainder of the board. We have not had adequate time to review, and that is my personal feeling.
If you would restate your motion for me.
I'd like to restate this motion to say, I'd like to make a motion that we deny, recommend to the Board of Supervisors to deny this application.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Henderson is our second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Any other discussion?
Just one question. Now, the motion is made to deny, so that would be a yes vote if we want to deny it.
Correct.
That's right. I've been agreed.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman? Or is it my other line?
Yes.
I'm trying to have that courage that Ms. Wilder told me, courage to do the right thing. I'm tired, all of y'all are tired. I've got my neighbor waiting for me. I had a flat tire, everything went bad before I got here. And I've got friends on both sides of the coin here. It's been very difficult. But some, I mean, I don't have all the answers. It's a lot of questions not answered for me. I'm talking about myself. Excuse me. The planning commission's mission is to recommend to the Board of Supervisors what should be done. Within my heart, I, this is such a huge project coming to a small area, none of us have all the answers, that I don't feel like that I am capable of recommending something to the Board of Supervisors that I have a lot of questions still. So, my vote. Why, I mean, I know the proffers, we got the proffers when I got here. I have not had time to read them, only what he's told. Are the proffers going to make a difference, as our chairman said? I think we should vote. I think it's a good motion. Let's settle it. Do we want it to go to the Board of Supervisors? Let them decide. It's really, and this is just a preliminary hearing anyway, they make the final decision. So.
Mr. Chairman.
One more time. Yeah, Mr. Webb.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I normally take an awful lot of stock in staff recommendations and Emily saying that with the lateness of the proffers, not being able to say if it's moved toward one way or the other, more against it, a little more in favor of it, who knows? The more I've sat through this evening, my original thought today was that when I first saw the proffers this morning, that I like to have a full breadth of information that my supervisor will have when they go to make that decision, that I would have that same understanding that I'm passing on to them. But I think as we went through the discussion in the latter half and the responses to the community's issues this evening, that at this point, denying the request would probably be the best course of action, so if at some point in the future it gets cleaned up, it's done a better way. So I'll be voting to deny the request as well.
Anybody else?
I agree. This thing's been up and down the whole time. In the beginning, it was huge. Now they've shrunk it, and they can't find water. We got water, no competitive calls VDOT until the day before we have a hearing on, they originally canceled, you know, and then reapplied for, and then we get proffers twenty-four hours before that we didn't see until tonight, so I agree with it now.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I think not to get law, you know, there's a saying in the law that says, don't lose the forest for the trees. We've gone through a lot of trees tonight, but the main point for me, and why I will vote to deny, is because of the comprehensive plan as written by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. I have, I give pause to changing the zoning of this particular parcel. Again, I, there are a lot of ways you could argue this, but spot zoning is a concern for me when it does not fit in a comprehensive plan. I'm not saying that that is conclusively what this would be called if we did approve it, so don't hear me saying that, but it is a concern, and when you have an overarching comprehensive plan, this tends to go against it, and I have not been presented enough evidence or proffers to change my mind. And when you're talking about an eight-point-five billion dollar project, I would think that the ducks would be in a row to get this done, and right now, they're just simply not. So I would, I would suggest that my vote's going to be to be in favor of the motion and deny.
All right. Any other comments from, yes. We're calling for the question again. Collap, can you repeat your motion one final time?
That's all right, absolutely. Let me say one thing if I can. I thank everyone here. We all have a lot of pieces, and it's late. I'm usually up, but I'm feeling it now, so it's really late. But this is a strong county, and this job, I didn't realize how hard it could be until just the last few months, but I do appreciate the investors coming. You know, when you start a business, all you do is you try, and that's not a knock on them. He said, look, this is what I want to do, and we can't take that from him. But at the same time, with what we're presented with on its face, I can't go home tonight in clear thought and leave it as it is. So, in that case, in this Please bear with me. In case R. twenty-five dash zero zero one, I would make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to deny this application.
Mr. Oaks, your second.
Yes, sir.
Correct. All right. Please cast your vote.
I believe Mr. Webb originally seconded the motion. Was that correct?
No.
No, Mr. Oaks, I'm sorry.
Motion carries. Seven minutes. Please, please come to order if you will. As you exit tonight, please do so safely, but also quickly. Some of us like to get home and not be held up in the hallway. Any other business on the
We do not have any old business, and we do not have any new business.
All right. At eleven forty-three